All right, in accordance with the requirements of the Oprah meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Get into roll call, everyone is present. The executive session, we are going to postpone till the end of the meeting. So we'll go into public comment. Is there any public comment from the board?
I would like to clarify my misspoken comments last meeting, that most of us have jobs, and you have been an excellent chair, and I do appreciate your dedication to the position.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
As the Chair of a public comment.
Sure.
As many of you know, I am not intending to run for election for the planning board, instead of running for selectman. So I'd like to state to everyone, you know, all of you, that this has been an incredible learning opportunity. I've really enjoyed working with all of you. Certainly, we still have a couple of months ahead, and look forward to all the things on the agenda, and getting to town meeting, and, you know, but certainly, with the campaign ahead, I certainly look forward to speaking with you guys outside in the meeting setting. But this certainly has been a highlight experience for me, so thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll get into our first public hearing. It's a continuation from an AT&amp;T tower at 9 Chase Road. Sure. If you could just identify yourself for the record, please.
Yeah, hi, my name is Nate Druin from Cell Info, contractor on behalf of AT&amp;T.
Thank you. So I think we had a couple of outstanding questions from our last meeting, and everybody's got the information in their folders. Did everybody get a chance to look at the information regarding the lights? Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Seems like they've done what we asked.
Yeah.
All righty, um, is there any?
Just to follow up, you do have a letter from the applicant on the lights in the area. I did speak to the superintendent of the water district. There is a T-Mobile OmniPoint tower on the water tower as well, and that, or they're located on the tower, and their equipment cabinet is the one on the residential side of the water tower. So he's following up with their maintenance people to address the light issue, either through shielding, or, interestingly enough, he suggested a timer on the light as well without my prompting. So he's going to work with them to resolve that issue for those residents, and he said the AT&amp;T cabinets are on the opposite side of the tower, and even if they did have a light, it wouldn't shine in that direction.
Have I received any more feedback from the butter?
She said, she told me where it was and when it was, and I, in getting that information, I followed up with the water district. That's where we're at now.
Thanks, Mr. Bernie.
All right. Is there any more questions from the public on this matter? Accept the motion to close the public hearing?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, now we can deliberate if you feel there's any need. Think they've satisfied all my concerns?
Yeah.
I'm good, and we had already approved the waivers at the last meeting.
Took a straw poll. You need the request to approve, you approved the waivers, but there is a singular waiver on the shortened time span for submission of supplemental information. It would have been due last Tuesday. They submitted it Thursday. You said you felt that that was a reasonable thing, but without the written waiver in hand, there's no, you need the written waiver to be able to actually pass the vote.
So do we need to move to approve that waiver?
Yes.
Now? I move that we approve that waiver for the time constraint for getting written request in.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All set?
Well, we need to vote on the project itself now, so if there's no more discussion or questions, I'd accept the motion.
Then I would move that we approve the modification to add three antennas at 9 Chase Road.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you guys very much, appreciate it. Have a great evening.
You as well.
All right, moving on to our next public hearing. It's for 654 and 658 Massachusetts Avenue. Would you please read the hearing notice?
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 26, 2018, 6:35 PM, Joseph Ballot, Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and discuss an application for a site plan approval under Section 250-8.4 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg, Mass. For construction of a three-family dwelling at 654 and 658 Massachusetts Avenue, map 059, parcel 018 and 017. Applicant owner is Signature Living LLC, 555 Chase Road, Lunenburg, Mass. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office, 960 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, 05962.
Hello? Would you mind identifying yourself for the record, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Greg Roy with Ducharme and Dillis. Thanks for your time this evening. As you've read, I'm representing Signature Living. The applicant is here if there are any questions. And we're here for the property at 654 Massachusetts Avenue. Just a little bit of background, am I, is this close enough? Okay. A little bit of background. Back last year, early last year, the applicant applied to the zoning board of appeals to, for a special permit to extend the pre-existing non-conforming use, which is a three-family, a three-family dwelling. So, pre-existing, we had a three-family dwelling. This is actually the existing conditions plan here. There was a three-family dwelling, right there, shown in pink. And the zoning board of appeals didn't indeed grant a special permit for the extension of that use. And that is why we are here this evening. Your bylaw, I'm sure you're aware, it actually exempts projects under four units from site plan approval, but then it goes and requires it, if there's, for any use requiring a special permit. So we have a special permit, even though we have a three-unit project, we have a, a special permit was required, so your bylaw requires us to be here before your board this evening. So we pulled together plans, and I'll just go over the existing conditions really quick, and then I'll go into the proposed project. Also want to acknowledge that we did receive some comments from your peer review consultant and a few other agencies, so I'll kind of talk through those at the end. I'm sure Mr. Walsh may want to speak to those as well. And then obviously, we're very interested to hear any questions or comments that you have, or any questions or comments that the, anybody in the audience may have. So the property is 1.3 acres in size. It does encompass two parcels, as you read, both known at 654 and 658 Massachusetts Avenue. They're both held in common ownership, so the parcel in total is 1.3 acres. There are two zoning districts. The property is bisected by the, by two zoning districts. The front of the, the front of the property, so we show that zoning district in the dash line right there. The front of the property is within the limited business residential zoning district, and the back of the property is within the residence aid zoning district. And as I think you've read, we've, we've referenced the book, excuse me, the assessors map and parcels, map 59, parcel 17 and 18, parcel 17 and 18. So the other thing I wanted to point out is, there is an off-site, a wetland system off-site with an associated buffer zone on the property, which I know isn't your purview, but I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that we have filed a joint notice of intent with the conservation commission. They will open that hearing next week on the 4th of April. I'm going to just take a quick minute and flip the plan. Would it be helpful if I gave you a copy, a small copy of the color plans? I do have reduced copies, if that would help.
Yeah, you can also take the microphone over there with the.
Those are the same plans that you have in your packet already, just colored up for this evening's presentation. So we gave you a pretty lengthy narrative that was intended to document compliance with the relevant sections of your bylaw. I'm not going to go through and rehash that, but I am going to give you a quick overview of what we're proposing to do, and I think I will go over to the, to the board, it'll be easier to present. If I have enough rope. So, the project, as I stated, was to reconstruct the three-family dwelling. We propose to bring that further back from the road. We've shown these zoning setbacks with the caveat that the bylaw, your bylaw doesn't have a zoning offset requirement for the limited business district. So we tried to be conservative and just take the most restrictive zoning offset that you have in your bylaw. We've shown a 25-foot offset to the property line, and then we've, we're even, we've moved the building even further than that, so we're approximately 35 feet from the, from the nearest property line. And then we've held the required rear yard, which would be 25 feet, and the front yard is no, no issue, we're in excess of that by quite a good margin. So our plan is to hold the existing driveway access, tighten it up a little bit, there's a pretty wide curb cut there now, so we propose to, to reconfigure that so that we're only, to accommodate what would just, would minimally be required for this project, which would be a 12-foot driveway with the, with the required radiuses at the, at the curb cut. So one entrance, and then we would split to the three, to the three units in the property. We are proposing to use the sewer connection that already exists on the, on the stub that exists to the property. One of the review comments you have, you may have in your packet, was from the water district relative to the water service. We have been in contact with them. We will be installing a new service to service this property to accommodate both the sprinkling and the domestic water supply, so we, we will have that information on a, on a future revised plan for your board. We've also, your bylaw requires compliance with stormwater management, so we have submitted to you drainage calculations that document compliance with the, both your regulations but also the Massachusetts stormwater management policy. The most significant feature there is a drainage basin in the front of the site. There's a, there's a natural, I don't want to call it a valley, that'd be probably giving it too much credit, but a natural sort of depression that runs down, high point being here, low point being down by the wetland. So we're proposing to take advantage of that, add a small berm on the downhill side and create some stormwater management in that area. We do have, we have been working through some comments by Mr. Walsh, who submitted a few comments relative to our drainage calculations. Happy to talk through those, but I think that we anticipate being able to accommodate all those comments in a subsequent revision. We have those pretty well worked out. I just didn't have time to get those in advance of your meeting and have, and give you folks enough time to really have any meaningful review of those plans, or, or Mr. Walsh. So we anticipate getting those within the next couple of days submitted. The prod, the, the building would be a walkout, so we've, we've set the foundation and accommodated the grading so that we could have a walkout basement in the back. Drainage would be down through a swale that would, that would come down this way, and then we would grade around the sides to accommodate that. We have also shown snow storage on the plan per your bylaw. We anticipate that being along the edge of the driveway, also some here at the edge of this, at the edge of that driveway there. And then we have shown some landscaping, some of it within the buffer zone. There was some, some tree removal that was, that was done along with the demolition of the house, which happened last year. So we do intend to put some of those, some of those same species, red maples, back in, and we'll be talking with the conservation commission about that. We're also trying to save as many of the trees that are still standing as possible as part of that landscape feature, and then we do propose to put in some, some additional evergreen-type screening in the front to kind of shield things a little bit from the, from the street. We're also trying to preserve as much of the natural vegetation on the sides and rears as possible. We did ask for a few waivers, so I thought I'd go through those if it was appropriate at this time, and then, and then turn it over to you folks for questions, and if Mr. Walsh wants to speak to his letter, we'd be happy to hear that as well. In your packet, section, right after, right after the application, so in section 1.0, after the copy of the checks, we submitted a letter dated March 1st with the waiver requests, and if I could, I'll just, I'll just roll through those. Would you like me to do them one by one, or would you like me to just go through them?
How many are there individually?
There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
If you could just briefly touch on.
Sure, yep. We've asked for a waiver to the required plan scale. You require the plan be drawn at a scale of 1 inch equals 40. We drew this at a scale of, I can't read my, I think 1 inch equals 20, which is, and actually, our existing conditions is 1 inch equals 30, which are smaller, you know, scales that are easier to read, so we just thought that was a better, better way to communicate the information. We, your, your regulations require the preparation of a cut- fill analysis. We've, we've taken cut- fill, balancing cut fills into account, we just didn't do a detailed cut- fill analysis, given the size of the site we're talking about here, but we've, the, the cut that we need in the rear of the site and in the foundation hole can be used to build up the front of the site for the detention basin, which is our intention, so I, we just didn't do a formal cut- fill analysis. Again, your regulations require the preparation of a photometric plan showing the foot candle information. We are not proposing any lights other than what would be on, you know, on a building customary to this type of use, residential type use. So thinking that that regulation was more appropriate towards a parking lot or something like that, or a project where we're actually proposing some larger, taller parking lot style lights, where spillage could be an issue, where we've respectfully requested that, that information be waived. Your fourth one is relative to architectural elevations. We did submit some, what we are proposing, a sketch of what, of what the front of the facade would look like. We've also submitted floor plans, which depict what we're proposing to build. They just have not been prepared by a registered architect. So certainly a full set of building plans would be submitted as part of the application. Am I going too fast? Sorry, guys.
Can I ask?
It's in the packet.
Oh, because I didn't see.
The formal letter's in the stapled packet.
No, I didn't see the, I didn't see the architectural elevation.
I think they're in the back of that same packet.
Back of this.
Yes, back of that packet. Section, section 6, right at the, right at the end.
Second, please.
Yeah, second to last.
Ah, got it.
We, and the other ones are related to your, maybe I can lump the last four in, they're all section 4.1.8. You require a traffic, transportation, and circulation impact report, a public services and fiscal impact report, an environmental impact report, and a community impact report. We've respectfully asked for waivers on those, just because we're not really proposing a new use here. We're replacing a three-family use with a new family, three-family use, so we don't see any impact on any of those, any of those metrics, so. Happy to answer questions on that, or any questions, any other questions that the board may have. And I just will say too, that we, as I mentioned earlier, we did receive Mr. Walsh's letter. We have worked through most of, if not all of the, of the changes required by that. We, and we anticipate having a revised set submitted back to him and your board after we receive any comments that you may have this evening, so. With that, I'll stop talking, and happy to take any questions.
Certainly.
Just, I'm trying to understand better what the zoning board of appeals did. So just, I mean, looking at their findings, at the, looking at the motion that was made, my understanding of this is that they gave the applicant, Mr. Babino, permission to tear down the existing structure, and then permission, based on the picture I'm looking at at the back, to have a, that a design of this shape would not be detrimental to the neighborhood. Is that the correct read of their findings?
That's what I believe it to be, and I believe the initial structure was, was it condemned, it needed to be taken down, from what I understand?
I can't, I'm not sure I can speak to that, I wasn't involved back then.
I was at the CBA meeting, and I believe they said that the, I think it was Mr. Savageo at the time, who's still the building inspector, but basically, the house became uninhabitable, so.
If I may clarify a little bit, so because it's, it was a non-conforming use, and they wanted to continue the non-conforming use, under our zoning bylaw, demolition is considered abandonment. When you abandon a non-conforming use, you cannot reinstate the non-conforming use. So prior to the demolition of the home, they petitioned the zoning board for a special permit for the continuation of the non-conforming use, the three-family. And they said, our intention is to take it from, it was probably 20 feet from, from Mass Ave, and we're going to resituate it on the site. We're going to build a contemporary three-family. I believe what was there was a, an up-and-down three-family, which.
Yeah, I think there was two up-and-down, and then a one that turned them off to the side.
Yeah, and you generally don't see those as much, so they said, we're going to build this other three-family dwelling, and the zoning board gave them the conceptual approval. Here's a general footprint, as long as it meets these general parameters, that use can continue to be a non-conforming use. And then they're here to hammer out the details with, with us.
I tend to take a long time when I take the, when I, when I go first, so.
That's okay.
Is there anyone that's?
Just had a couple of quick questions on what you presented, Greg. Is that, so you're getting new water, a new water line, same sewer?
Same sewer. There's a 6-inch sewer stub.
Yeah.
I talked to Jack this morning, Mr. Roddicklins this morning. There's a 6-inch sewer stub. Jack was, Jack had a question, I think you may have seen his email, about the, is there enough capacity? Truthfully, there would be enough capacity here with a 4-inch line, but there's a 6, so we're, we're okay there.
Okay.
So we do intend to tie into that. Talking with Jack today, he has some requirements for how we would tie into that. He may want us to actually put a manhole in the, on the site and tie three separate services in from each unit to that manhole. So we're still working with him on that to make sure we get him what he needs, but whatever is required, we'll, we'll commit to do.
Okay, and a new water line?
New water line, yes.
Okay.
And apparently, that, that has been discussed even previous to this process with the, with the water department. And it was, we've, the applicant actually re-discussed that today with Mr. McNamara at the water district. So we anticipate needing a 2-inch line to service both the domestic and fire protection needs of that, for that building, so.
Okay.
That's what we would be proposing.
And are they going to, they're going to require cutting the roadway?
Well, we, we certainly will have to, we, the water line's across the street, so we're going to have to figure that out. So we, we will indeed have to get across that roadway. There are other things that can be done. I do, we'll just have to look, you know, there's, you can, sometimes you can, you can directional drill if it's cost-effective, if the soils are right, but yes, we have to connect water mains on the public safety side of the building, so.
I don't know how everyone else feels, but I am a little concerned about the lighting. I love the way you've pushed the, the house back significantly, but I'm, I'm concerned about the lighting from the neighbor's backyard, whether or not that's going to be shining in their windows.
Okay.
So, not sure if we can make sure that those are downlights, anything you have, you know, in front of the building.
Uh, yeah.
You know, just full cutoffs or.
Yeah. Any thoughts on proposed light?
Just the lighting on the building itself, it's quite.
Doors, garages, doors and garages, no floods?
There's no anything in the back.
Yeah.
So they go to the front, decided that this construction is on.
Okay.
As far as the, the water, we have it on underneath.
Can we ask you to come up?
Yeah, would you mind coming up to the microphone, sorry?
Steve Babino, the applicant.
Can't hear you at home.
So as far as the water line, we have a 2-inch main that's going to get drilled under the road, because they don't want us to touch the newly paved road.
Yeah.
So the engineering, they, they're doing the design right now, but we already have it, a 2-inch main going across. Talked to Fran this morning, he said that's, that's what's going to be quiet.
Okay, great. So you will be directionally drilling, instead of?
Yeah, we're not touching the top at all.
Beautiful. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a nice new, new pavement there.
You said there's no parking lot lights or anything like that, right? So it's just standard house.
Along the.
Really, just what would be required by.
Coach lanterns.
An entrance waylight.
Yeah, right.
So I'm looking at the waivers that you've requested.
Yes, sir.
And if you can just explain them to me, that'd be helpful. So I'm just looking at four of them that I have questions on. The first is the traffic survey, and this is a pretty busy road, so I'll just list them on my four concerns. So it's a pretty busy road. I think a traffic survey would be helpful. I think that the environmental impact statement, you know, I don't believe that this needs to be a very lengthy document, but I would be more comfortable if there was a kind of a thorough product that explained what the impact would be. Because I do see, looking at some of the other, some of the other maps, that this is a pretty wet area.
Mm-hmm.
So I would like to know what the impact, you know, would be. And then also the community impact, because this is not along this road, I'm not familiar with any other three-family dwellings. So this would be rather unique. So I wonder what the community impact would be. And then also on the photometric plan, which was just discussed, I think it would be helpful to have a lighting plan that at least says, hey, exactly what you just said. This is where we're planning on putting our lights at, so that way we can go into this with a little bit more information about how this affects the butters. So looking at your plan itself, I have a general question, but it sounds as though it's already been answered, which is that, you know, when I think of a three-family, and I think of exactly what Mr. Bernie or Mr. Bittner said, where you're kind of stacked on top of each other. And I would think that townhouses, which we do have a separate definition for, I would view that as being slightly different. Now, I know Mr. Bernie said three contemporary, it's more of a contemporary three-family. So I guess I have a couple of questions for Mr. Bernie and for Mr. Bittner on this, on this point. Are we supposed to, has a decision already been made that this qualifies for a three-family dwelling?
Yes.
Okay.
I have some questions and comments on that, but please continue.
Go ahead, Mr. Allison. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Allison.
Um, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
Well, before I even looked at the review engineer's comments, I noticed that it was limited business residential, and, and then residence A, and neither one of them speak to three bit, three-family, nor does the site plan approval 8.4, which this public hearing is, is, been proposed under. 8.4B1 and B2 both say more than four units for the site plan approval now, not site plan review. Limited business residence only allows for one and two-family, and residence only allows for one-family. They allow for an attached accessory or, or two-family on one and a half times the minimum lot area. Now, I can appreciate the grandfathering in of whatnot, but I'm not quite sure how the wording of the regulations give us the authority to approve this.
Well, the zoning board, through section seven, approved the continuation of a pre-existing non-conforming use, three-family dwelling, which existed prior to the coding of the limited business residential zoning. So, through the authority of the continuation of a non-conforming use, they are allowed to continue the three-family dwelling. Under 8.4, there's a clause that says, "Any use that requires a special permit shall require a site plan approval."
So, a special permit from the ZBA?
Yes, they, well, yes, any...
Doesn't make any, no distinction.
It just says, "Any use that requires a special permit."
So, that's how it follows?
In this instance, the ZBA granted a special permit for the use, the continuation of non-conforming...
We don't have any specific regulations for this, so it's...
Correct.
Just to, not to get technical, how many parking spaces are proposed?
Proposed? Uh, well, there would be, you know, I think two per unit, so you're six.
So, you're not including the garage spaces?
Uh, well, you, you could. So, we have two, two stall garages and one single.
Okay.
It looks like there's 10 parking spots.
Yeah, that was a part of the city confusing for me, so we have...
That's where, that's what I was getting at, and under 8.421C, it says, "A construction rehab of a building involving 10 or more parking spaces," which would also fall in the site plan approval. Not to get technical.
The garage spaces don't count?
Well, I was unsure yet, but...
Yeah, I kind of do, like I said, it kind of depends on how you count.
I think that this is a, I have a broad comment. So, first is, I think that this is a good plan. I think that it is tastefully done and tastefully drawn. I appreciate the fact that it is removed from the road. I think that you have made a lot of efforts to do setbacks, you know, buffering. So, you know, I'm inclined to, you know, looking at this, I think this is, again, a good plan. My concern is not about my personal feeling, it's about what's allowable. And I would disagree, I guess, with the zoning board, which I think I can, in the sense of a one building that has kind of three apartments inside of it, in my opinion, is drastically different than three townhouses put together. That the one building, the previous, has a shared, you know, driveway, which this has, but you also have a smaller parking area. There's one common kind of entrance, for the most part. And what you've done is, is three townhouses put together, I don't, I would not consider that to be a three-family dwelling. I know that essentially it is three families dwelling, right? But I guess I would look at it a little differently. I think that three-family dwelling, for me, conjures up something entirely different. I think it has a, more of a historical term to it, in a sense of what, what kind of buildings that refers to.
Mm-hmm.
And it makes me wonder why we would go through the effort in previous town meetings to define what a townhouse is, to define what a dwelling is, to separate this. And then in this particular zone, with it saying, you know, one or two dwellings, you know, you have the special permit, I don't disagree with you building a three-family dwelling there. I guess I disagree that it should look like this. So, I, I need to probably take some time and reconcile that. But I also, you know, going forward, you know, I would like to see traffic, environmental, community, and the photometric. But I, again, I applaud you for how well this is designed. I'm just, I need, I need to do a little bit more digging, I guess, figure out if I can reconcile that this is consistent.
If I may.
Sure.
I appreciate, Mike, all your concerns and questions. I'm not sure if I'm familiar with Stony Brook, which is right down.
Correct.
It's identical to those units. I mean, they're really nice, nice, nice-looking buildings. Typically, that's how we see a triplex.
Yep.
We don't want to see it going up, you know, like a three-family, like Pittsburgh or anything like that. So, triplex is a lot cleaner-looking. The fact that there is no wetland on this property.
Correct.
Okay. Because you mentioned your concern about the wetland.
Nearby, not on this property.
Correct.
Yep. But your, your elevations would suggest that there is some flow, right, that flows down from this property?
Yeah, the proper drainage and all that around, that we have to take into consideration, perimeter drains.
Correct. So, and that's why I think I would, it would be helpful for me to see an environmental statement that combines what we're saying together right here, right now, and says, you know, that we understand that we are uphill from an area, and these things have mitigated the impact to that spot. Now, we're not the conservation commission, right?
That's what I was just going to say, right.
So, the environmental impact statement does not need to go that in-depth. I think this needs to be a statement.
We can, we can summarize the things that we've put in the plan that mitigate, that have been done to mitigate that concern. I think maybe it's what you're...
Exactly. I think the information's already here.
We can put that together, yeah. If I could just, I'm sorry, could I, sorry to interrupt. So, I, I understand your point. If I could just, just give a little, we're, it's certainly, the board's prerogative to disagree if, if, you know, with what we're proposing. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to usurp your authority. But we're not asking you for the, for anything relative to the use of a three-family, because that's already been decided. So, if you give your permit, if you give a, a site plan approval, which is an independent process from the use special permit, it would allow us to go and apply for, for a building permit. If the zoning board of appeals had determined that that wasn't appropriate use, or if we had a vacant piece of land and were proposing to put a three-family use on that, that would not be something that's permissible by your bylaw. But your bylaw does allow the special, the zoning board of appeals to grant a special permit to, you know, for a pre-existing non-conforming use, which they've done. So, you know, we're, just wanted to be clear, we're not asking you for a use, anything relative to the use, because it's already been decided.
Correct.
And, and I just will, I didn't, I didn't acknowledge his, his memo, but the, the building department did, did give a, did give a memo to that effect as well. So, I think that might be in your, in your packet, so.
Thanks.
But just, just a quick response, so...
Just, just to give another perspective on this, I think it's a great plan. I think it's a great use case. I do like the plan. I do like the way that you laid it out, and I do like the Stony Farm buildings, and I think this will fit in well with the area, actually better than a three-decker would. And I think the neighbors would probably appreciate a three-side-by-side unit a little bit more than some kind of a high-rise. So, independent of the comments made by Graves Engineering, which I think, in my summary, would all need to be addressed.
Yep.
You know, I, I think it, it looks like a good project, and I would be in favor of approval of this with, with the waivers that you guys are looking for. So, just to give you an alternate perspective.
We, if I could just, I don't want to go out of turn. If, if you want to have Mr. Walsh go through these, we have reviewed these, there's 21 or 22 comments. We don't have any that we need to, that we need to discuss with you. We're intending to address these. So, there's none that we're really thinking that we have to, you know, talk with the board on there. So, I think, you know, we, like I said in my initial comments, we anticipate having those, we, we have most of them addressed, if not all of them addressed already. We're just sort of, we like to do as few planner visits as possible, so I wanted to, well, I didn't have an opportunity to get the plans to you beforehand because of the time constraints. No, no, certainly not saying anything about the responsiveness of Walsh, but just, I just opted to come before this process, take any comments that you have, and we'll put together a full comprehensive...
Yeah, so, I mean, my biggest concern over about the stormwater management comments. So, if you're going, if you're already committed to address everything in the Graves report, that's great. So, the next time you, you come forward, the review theoretically would have no issues, because you'll have addressed everything. And I, I think we're looking for a little bit of additional information that it sounds like you'd be okay with providing. I'm not sure about the...
Yeah, I do have a question.
One of them was a, we have a request for waivers, and there's at least one board member that has a concern with a couple of the waivers. So, we probably, I assume we would need to discuss which waivers we would not be as a, as a board, when we vote on that.
Right, we can, we can address those individually.
waiver by waiver, or call out the two, we have a potential concern with them, vote on that? Is that the procedure for that?
Yeah, I'd say just if anybody is not in favor of granting the waivers, then point out which ones they're not in favor of granting, probably be the easiest way to go about it.
Okay, great, yeah.
I actually have a couple of questions. My questions were addressed by the rest of the board, but was there any consideration given to adding any auxiliary parking? And if it, would it affect stormwater numbers? I mean, I know it would minimally, but I'm thinking maybe either according to that plan to the north of where the driveways are, even if you could, if you could expand opposite the garages, if you could expand that to even permit for a couple of parallel parking spots, or even off to the east of the, I know you don't want to park them along, no, down towards the garage of the first unit on the east. No, the other way, other end.
Other side?
Down there somewhere.
Where's Sharky?
Um, just because with guests and kids, I know they're three-bedroom units, and I know you can't park on Mass Ave either, so if it was in a more residential neighborhood, you'd have, but I just didn't know if you had given that any consideration, or would...
We, we did. I mean, we think, we think we have, I mean, I know we have a multiple, multiple, multiple family environment here, but, you know, we, we think we have that covered, but I mean, we could certainly consider it if it's something that you think is, I think we can get, we can get a lot of cars off the, I mean, even though...
Are those larger driveways expected to hold four cars stacked up, or?
Yeah, you could hold, well, you could have two, so let me just go. Sorry, chugging all these... You, you can have, so two-car garage, two-car garage, one-car garage. So, you could have obviously two cars in the garage, two cars in front. And we've, we've sized that so that you could have a full car in there. So, you know, we have five spaces there. And then, of course, you know, just like a regular driveway, you can certainly park in the, you know, along the drive lanes, you know, so you could get another car in here, you know, there's, there's quite a bit of, of space there.
Know if you'd have enough room to make the swings.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you had cars parked in here and this guy needs to get out, I understand your point. And we could certainly look at that. I don't think it would negatively impact our drainage, all of the, all of the, I mean, we'd have to work into the calculations, but I think, I mean, if it was something, we can talk about it, Steve, if it's something, maybe we could do something...
Enough room just to bring that driveway out, just...
Maybe we could do something like a, like impermeable, I mean permeable, like a gravel shoulder or something like that, that just widens it, so we, you know, we're not, you know, putting in a, a highway there or something. You know, if we did, if we did some gravel...
Requires a durable dustless surface.
Durable dustless surface. All right. So, does gravel not count for that?
No, that counts.
Oh, it does?
I'm just thinking of maintenance in the...
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I mean, you might have a few months in the wintertime when it gets challenging, but I think if, but it could be plowed, you know, you could plow it. So, maybe we could consider that, Steve. Anything else?
And you do have to go before sewer at some point to get...
Yeah, well, we talked to, I talked to Jack today. He's, his main concern was just that the capacity existed in that lateral, excuse me, which, which it does. So, I, yeah, we, we'd need whatever, we're committed to getting whatever permits we would need, but again, with us was a three-family use before, and it, and we're converting it to a three-family use now, I, I don't know how much of an impact that'll have on the sewer.
Yeah, I believe they said, sent the letter, I don't know if you get that, just spelling out, not betterment, but what's the word for when they add additional units?
Privilege?
Privilege fees, yes.
Okay. The sewer commission sent one? I don't know if I saw that.
No, I think it was just Jack.
Just Jack?
No, Barb, it was from Barb.
I must have missed that.
Yeah, it came from the administrator from the sewer, because I think it was...
Oh, maybe I missed that. Okay. I might have missed that, yeah.
Yeah, I'm done. So, to follow up with the driveway, I think that with three families, with three bedrooms each, so that's nine bedrooms, you've got a capacity of 10 vehicles. Mass Ave has a traffic of between 8,000 and 10,000 cars per day. It's, I would like to see some sight distances on here, because it is on the outside of the curve, yes, but it is adjacent to a couple of fairly decently-used intersections directly across from the public safety building. And to the west, to the east of it, there is a considerable dip which causes a loss of sight. Not only that, I think the width of the driveway at 12 feet is inadequate to avoid queuing on the street if there was somebody coming out when somebody was trying to pull in. And again, that could be just the durable dustless surface, but it, I think that it would need to be wider to give, you know, like if somebody's coming eastbound on Mass Ave and they need to turn in, but there's somebody pulling out?
Yep.
People go flying around this corner.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think it's posted at 40.
Yeah, I live right, I live right around the corner there, so I know the...
I think it's posted for 40, and I believe the sight distance is more than 300 feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we did look at that. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but it's pretty, you can see all the way down to the intersection of Beal in that direction. And actually, pretty decent the other way, too. I don't have the, the numbers, but we can certainly add it to the plan.
So, it's, just to surmise, it sounds like widening the driveway as it goes out to Mass Ave would address both of your concerns, because it would give additional parking and provide inbound and outbound?
No.
No?
No. If they parked there, then it would not suffice for the width of the, right?
Right. Well, in theory, if they parked there, they would be parked closer to the dwelling as opposed to what this entrance...
Sure. I mean, if, if there was a no parking for 30 feet, maybe?
Yeah, we can...
That would, that would suffice, I would think.
Because what about Christmas and, you know, Easter, when people have a bunch of people over? So, I mean, you know, they're going to want someone to park.
Yep.
So, I think, I agree. I have a, real quick, not to steer thunder, I always, I think I ask this question at every public hearing. Have you talked to the abutters? And if so, how did you mitigate their concerns?
Not past, that I know of, if you talk to anybody. Not past notification, maybe somewhere here, I'm not sure, but not past the notifications that we've done, so.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Walsh at any rate, and, but it looks like a good project. I like the looks of it so far. I just look forward to getting the rest of the information.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Jeff Walsh. I'm with Graves Engineering, peer reviewer for the planning board. I can boil down my letter very easily. Three sections, well, the first one's on zoning. The only issues I had with respect to zoning was some information that's required by the zoning bylaw that needs to be on the plan. General engineering comments in the back, we had a few engineering comments, and those boiled down to some information needed to be provided or clarified on the plans. And that leaves me with the section in the middle, hydrology and stormwater management. Definitely a well-thought-out, well-engineered project. And reviewing the hydrology calculations are just things that we saw that just didn't add up with what's being presented on the plan. I don't expect to see the stormwater management system change anything significantly from what's being proposed. It's just, I hate to say it, but a matter of documenting the hydrology calculations and making the revisions. I heard from Mr. Roy that we're going to make those changes, and they have those questions, and we don't have a difference of engineers' opinions, which would be fine, I'd be glad to discuss them if there were, but it sounds to me like things are headed in the right direction with respect to the hydrology comments, which were the more significant comments in our review letter, if there were any significant comments at all.
Do you feel that widening driveway would have a negative impact on the hydrology?
I wouldn't call it a negative impact.[1768.22]
I wouldn't call it a negative impact. It would have an impact that may be pretty minimal, but I was coming to the conclusion that, well, I did wrestle with, do you go with 12-foot wide driveway, which is what's being proposed, which is very standard for a single-family? Or do you go wider? And I certainly appreciate the concern that you brought up, Mr. Allison, about queuing vehicles coming out. I was kind of wrestling with that in the whole review of how much impervious do you put on a site like this? And I might suggest that if... I like the idea of widening the driveway. No parking on the driveway near the exit so that two vehicles can pass. I'd suggest that a width of 18 foot is not inappropriate for something like this. We have some municipalities that require... That do allow common driveways and they are called common driveways and they're administered through the planning board. And the standard is usually 18 feet that I see. So, for an extra six feet of pavement with some no parking marked out near Massachusetts Avenue, you could probably accomplish that parallel parking farther into the site. And most importantly, in my opinion, is don't let that queuing of a vehicle on Massachusetts Ave occur. I think that's a very, very important point right there. Did that answer the question? Okay. Great idea. I also wanted to put... Bring up one issue and I'm going to get outside the realm of civil engineering. Mr. Jeffrey's point about the type of structure. Alls I would want to offer is for consideration is everyone's thinking about the type of structure. Townhouse style, which a family unit or a, you know, whoever's inhabiting that dwelling there in the first floor and the second floor and so forth, so they're above their own roommates, if you will. If you have a three-family that is on different floors, you can have footfall noises from somebody other than your own family. So, you can't... Dad can't be beaten up on Junior for walking around thump, thump, thump. And I get that at my home when I'm down in the basement working. So, to that end, a townhouse style does take away that issue. Townhouse style also takes away the issue that each dwelling unit has its own entrance whereby... Whereas a more of a single entrance, that's going to require everyone coming through so that's going to require common space, maintenance of common space, lighting of common space, although that doesn't come about from a townhouse style dwelling. So, whether it's good or bad, you know, whether it's handled through a condominium association, if this is condominium-type of environment, it's just that comes into play. So, I just wanted to bring that up as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have for you gentlemen, unless you have any questions.
I do have a question. How common is it for a residential driveway to have pavement striping?
Very uncommon and I don't think it would be necessary, except for the no parking markings.
Maybe a sign?
A sign... The markings on the sign to call out the definite area, whether it's rectangle or what have you. And then maybe a sign because during snow cover, if people are over at Christmas or something like that. I'm not a fan of signs, but on the other hand, where people are coming into this as visitors may not be aware of the rules and they wouldn't be advised of the rules till they even get into the building if their host even tells them the rules. It's such an important issue to not have queuing on Mass Ave if you can avoid it, that I hate to say it.
I think a sign that says like, "No parking here in the street," on each side of the driveway would probably...
Facing both ways.
Yeah. Would work.
The other comment I had was there is definitely going to have to be common space maintenance because of the common driveway and the common landscaping and the common yard.
That is correct. Outside the building, but not within the building.
Not within.
It means another electrical service, another meter socket, another bill that's got to get spread out. It's not that... It's certainly not insurmountable. It's just one more thing.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say, we're committed to making that width change, so that's a good comment. That's a good comment, so we appreciate that. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.
So, what do we do? Continue?
Public.
Oh, public?
Oh, yeah. I had one... Couple of other questions, but I don't want to cut you off.
Yeah, just mine was written regarding to the deed recording of the special permit from the ZBA. We received the note that that hadn't happened yet.
Yeah. We saw that, yeah. So, there was a suggestion to give you an environmental impact statement, which we've committed to. There was also a suggestion, though, to do a traffic... Some information on traffic. And I guess I'm wondering what the board... Why, is the board looking to discuss the waivers this evening? And is that something that the board... That the entire board is looking for? I just... Of course, a full-blown traffic study would, I think, be a little bit over the top here, but is there something that I can provide in terms of getting you a summary of what, you know, what we have for traffic counts out there and what we would likely be expecting from a three-family? I could tell you right now, it's like 12 trips per unit. You're talking 36 trips over a day is the maximum we'd be expecting there. That's IDE, IT, whatever the book is, standard.
12 trips per day?
Per unit.
Per unit, okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, I just wanted to get my arms around that if there's some...
I can clarify what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
I don't think you need to do a traffic survey.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure.
No. So, I, you know, I partially do favor granting a traffic waiver, but I think that what would be helpful is some of the line-of-sight stuff.
Line-of-sight, certainly, yes.
Yeah. If you're at the end of this driveway and you're looking to the left, you're looking to the right, what is that going to look like?
Yep.
And I think that kind of probably answers some of the other questions about, you know, is it wide enough? Is it not wide enough? So, I think that's what would probably be helpful for traffic.
Sure.
Community impact. I don't think... I think what would be helpful would just be a statement.
Okay.
Basically, you're going to have, I presume, that someone nearby is not going to agree with this getting built. That's what I'm just going to assume. And I don't know that for a fact, but I would assume that. So, I'd like to see how, you know, you can... How you're wording this. I'm sure you market this. I mean, you're, you know, you have a good reputation. So, I'm sure that you're marketing, you know, as, you know, you're coming to... Whatever your marketing plan is, basically, I'm sure part of it encompasses some community impact. So, you know, just something about that.
Okay.
And then we've already talked about the lights, which you've agreed to, right?
We could put some lighting on there. That's no problem.
On the community impact, it would certainly help to just get any kind of input from the abutters to see if they have any requests, either for some kind of screenage or anything else. I don't know if they're... We didn't ask for the public yet, so I don't know if the abutters are here or not, but...
Yeah. I would ask just for a little clarification, Greg, on the... There's a sentence in here that you have under your Section 41H community impact report. "The residential zones have been shielded using the existing building and the trees have been proposed to help with screening."
Uh...
I'm not sure what that means.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
So, you know, I would just be looking for clarification.
We can... To your point, we'll amend this.
Okay.
It sounds like there's at least a few of you that aren't inclined to grant those waivers, at least without us.
Well, yeah, I'm not looking for a huge, you know...
Yeah, 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 but that's fine.
I think mainly people at 662 and 636, right? I mean, I think those are... And I don't personally know who those neighbors are.
Yeah, correct.
But I would imagine that just as the people moving into this are going to really enjoy their quality of life, that someone living next door to this is somehow probably going to change their quality of life. Now, this is your property, you know, and that's what we're looking at, the rules that apply to your property. But I think it's helpful to be neighborly and in the community impact statement to say, you know, "We did speak to the abutter and even though they don't support this, we're still going to put up some..."
662, I mean, was using the property... I apologize, this property is half an acre right here, it's very small, but 662 was using all that we can get from the trash, just everything. And he apologized and he's like, "Listen, I... This is all me."
Yeah.
So, yeah, this is what it is. Clean it up now. So, he's like, "I'm happy that it's fine, it's unchartered." Other than that, I mean, 636 approached me, said, "I'm doing something, I have to be cleaning it up." You know, we're planting some trees here and the other than that, that was pretty much it.
Oh, good.
We'll address it. So, I do appreciate that feedback and we'll make sure we get you some statements on those three items. That's it.
All right. Is there any public comment from the public regarding this project, please? If you would identify yourself for the record, sir.
Hi, everybody. My name's Chris Zarba. I live at 680 Massachusetts Avenue, which is along Mass Ave easterly by three properties. It's not shown on this map. However, my property line does abut in the easterly portion of the boundary as well as the entire southerly portion of the subject property. I do have a couple of questions or items that maybe could be explained. I've kind of looked through the drawings and trying to understand a couple of things that I see on here. The first thing that I had a question about is on the drainage, the pre-developed watershed map and the post-instruction watershed map. There's a line shown on the pre-developed watershed map that I believe... I know what it is, but it's not noted anywhere. And it generally runs from the northeast corner of the property to the southwest corner of the property. It's sheet number one of two. I don't know if you folks have that in front of you or not. Okay, great.
Is that the...
The wetland buffer?
The wetland buffer?
No, I don't believe it's a wetland buffer, but perhaps somebody could explain what it is. Then the... A similar line exists on sheet two of two, which is the post-developed watershed map, that I think by looking at the two of them, I think I was able to determine what it was telling... What that line is. It looks to me as though everything to the... Essentially, to the east or to the right of that line is draining by gradient away from that line toward the east or the southeast. And everything else on the left-hand side of the line is draining in the other direction.
Sir, are you talking about the line that bisects the original building on the pre-development plans? The dotted line?
No.
Okay.
That's a... I don't know what that line is either.
That's the wetland buffer line.
That's a wetland buffer. Okay, great.
Looking at these contour lines, it looks, and maybe Mr. Bavinor can correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks as if this is kind of the hilltop-ish area that they're building this on. So, it looks as though to the left or to the... As you go lower or higher in number or lower at 636, as you go in that direction, it's kind of going downhill, right?
Understood. And to get to my point and the reason for asking the question...
Is this the sheet you're talking about?
No.
No? Okay.
This was in the stormwater management plan?
Oh, stormwater.
I don't think we have that.
Okay.
So, to get to the point that I'm getting at, I believe that that's what that line of demarcation is telling us what's happening and that we can certainly have the engineers confirm that for us. In that regard, I don't... I'm not at 662, but that property in the very back part of that property... I've been on this property for more than 35 years, so I'm familiar with how things work and what... How drainage works and what's out there. In the back of this property, in the springtime, water will collect here just because of the way the land is graded. It abuts my property line. The water is generally on the other side of the line. But what I wanted to make sure in this plan, if, again, if you look at the watershed, post-developed watershed plan, there's a note that says grade to drain. It doesn't indicate which direction that is. And looking at the grading, some of it's going to go one way and possibly some of it's going to go the other way. And I would just want to caution about that because if it goes the other way, it's going to be creating a greater nuisance than what's there right now. So, I just wanted to, you know, try and understand that and it's an area of concern.
Through the chairs, is that something we could have Jeff take a look at or maybe Greg can speak to that?
Yeah.
Allow Mr. Roy to respond.
Thank you, sir.
That's very reasonable, sir.
Yeah, and we actually addressed it. So, the... Just to... I'll try to... You don't have the plan. I don't think you have the plan because I didn't give you five independent stormwater reports, but there's a break line right across the... Right across the site, something like this, where there's a high point in the site and the flow from this side flows towards the wetlands, but the flow from this side flows this way. That pre-existing now is what I'm talking about. So, stormwater management, sort of the basic stormwater management requires us to mitigate runoff off-site. So, we have to manage the stormwater in a manner that doesn't cause any off-site flooding. That's sort of the... Those are the buzzwords, off-site flooding. So, when you have a situation like this where you have water going in two different places, we have to make... We have to analyze it. We have to put a design point here and we have to put a design point here and make sure that the post-developed conditions match the pre-developed conditions or improve them. So, we did our analysis. We set up our pre-developed and our post-developed runoff watershed maps to accommodate that. So, we have some area in the pre-developed coming this way. We have some area in the post-developed coming this way. I can tell you that the way we've proposed this is to have a swale in the back of this... In the backyard here and that from the edge of the building over, that would all go this way. So, we have that... It's really difficult to see because the arrow is buried in the existing tree right here, but we're... Grade to drain is this way. So, that's what our intention is. We can certainly clarify that on the plan to make sure that it's done that way. I did note the standing water, so I do appreciate that concern. We were there a few weeks ago and there definitely is some water in that area. So, that's a reason why we're obligated under the stormwater management to make sure that we mitigate that concern. So, I... Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Just again, looking at the site plan, which I think was number three that you folks had, there are a number of trees that were talked about. There are existing large trees that are noted to be saved. I think there is a graphic that kind of shows a darker colored tree symbol. Three of those are noted as to be saved. The other two are not noted. So, it was kind of a question, is that a graphic representation that's accurate or not accurate? So it was kind of a question, is that a graphic representation that's accurate or not accurate? And are they all, all of the trees that are in that graphic representation to be saved or not? Just, you know?
Yeah.
They, they either are or they aren't. I just want to be clear on what, what the expectation is.
I see what you're saying, so some of them say save in parentheses and others do not.
Just the ones that they save.
That are saved.
So the one?
So the 30-foot oak in the backyard.
To answer your question, the one behind the house, if it was to remain, then the water would still shed towards your property. So they're, they're cutting like four feet out of the grade there, so they can't possibly save that tree. And that a lot?
The representation isn't accurate to the rest of the notation, that's why I wanted to make sure we were clear on what it was we were looking at on the drawing, that's all. You know?
I follow.
If it comes down, it comes down, you know, that's, that's fine, it's not, it's not my property, so I'm not going to have any concern about that. So, okay, so only the three that have, actually have the note on them are going to be staying? The, the maple out here at the corner of the property, is that coming down also on the tree line?
That's not their tree.
It doesn't appear to be theirs.
Okay, so this, this one down here, just to be clear, that one's coming down.
And we didn't, we, we did, these are the ones that are sort of out in the open. We didn't locate all the trees on the property. We do have, we did denote those just by a limit of clearing. So there is some other additional clearing on the property, but we just didn't call out the specific trees. But in that, those ones existed more relative to our wetlands filing, we, we kind of called out some of those more significant trees that are out in the open that we would be saving. We could certainly clarify that. We can add, we can, we can tighten that up on the revision.
And while we're talking about trees, there are other large trees that are more or less borderline trees between my property and this portion of the property along here. So I wanted to try and get a read on which, the comment was made that there may, that was one of my questions, will there be any additional clearing to the site? Sounds like there's going to be.
Greg, would you mind explaining, showing him the proposed limits?
Yeah, so you see that squiggly line right there? That's where we're proposing to clear. So we'd be, we'd be staying away from that area, yeah. And then as much as we can, we're staying away from this area, but, you know, we have to, just to accommodate the, the grade change there, as, as was stated, we are going to drop that. To accommodate that grade, you know, that drainage pattern, we're going to be dropping that a little bit. But we are trying to be sensitive to that, especially, you know, in this, in this area.
You're talking around, around the southern and the southeast property lines?
Right.
That sort of finger at the back of the property that, that borders, that abutters property?
Correct.
Just for everyone at home.
Save up, you know? Right. Pretty good chunk that we can save right in there. Get the three foot limit, which is the squiggly line, it's pretty close to the property, which is still covered with a grade change that we mentioned. But down in this area here is a pretty significant save area. So again, squiggly lines up here, dark green area, we're proposing to save those trees.
Great. A couple of other comments if I could?
Please.
I appreciate the board's concern about traffic and speed and concerns on that roadway. There've certainly been a number of accidents along that section of road over the years, having been there all the time that I have been. There was a time when I, when I first moved in there, I could pull out of the end of my driveway without looking left or right and not really have to worry too much about it. But that's quite different nowadays. The speed along that road, I don't know if it's, if there's been any studies done, but just anecdotally, I, I can tell you that people are traveling at 45 and 50 miles an hour on a regular basis, closer to 60 at sometimes. They come around the corner, no one's going 30 miles an hour on either one of those two corners, even though they're posted that way. The speed limit sign was taken down when the public safety building was built, believe it or not. That used to say 30 miles an hour going westbound on Route 2A. That was taken down, never replaced. Really kind of strange that that would happen, but that's what happened. So, you know, maybe, maybe there's something to be said for understanding exactly what's going to happen with traffic. Adding that number of trips right there, the sightlines are difficult, they definitely are. So it's a concern.
If I can ask a follow-up question, actually, Greg. Is your notice of intent likely to be impacted? Are those, cut, the, the clearing tolerances, the clearing lines, likely to be impacted by anything from the calling comm? Or do you suspect those are going to stay where they are?
I think they'll stay. The buffer, the, the clearing that I just referenced was outside of the buffer.
Okay.
So the buffer zone is, is this, this line right here. And most of it is cleared now.
Okay.
So, and the only place where it's not is, is towards the back, but we've, we've really tried to keep our grading outside of the buffers as much as possible back there to not do any further clearing in the buffer zone. So we're trying to be sensitive to that. So I, I don't anticipate it. There's actually some trees up here that aren't depicted, a woods line up here that we're going to keep as well. And if anything, we'll be adding trees like we proposed, so, to sort of re-vegetate that area. So I don't think that, this is outside of the jurisdiction of the conservation commission, so I don't think they'll have much to say about that.
Okay, thank you.
So kind of along with traffic and vehicles, the, the comments also that were made about the driveway, the number of parking spaces, I think we all know what happens to a garage when someone has a garage, it gets full of other stuff, and you don't ever park in the garage again. So, you know, you got cars, there're going to be, there're going to be more cars than you think that'll be out in, on the, on the lot, on the surface of the, of the building. I don't, is my, is that your garage or my?
Yeah, yeah, no.
I'm never parking mine.
Jam packed. Where you going to put your boat, right?
Right. So being that, you folks can't probably see this, but my house sits approximately in this location. That driveway with folks queued up here with their headlights on, warming up the cars in the morning, is going to be shining right into my living room on a regular basis. The elevation is, is high enough that it'll be coming straight at our windows on the west side of our house. So I was hoping that we could do something with a fence, some type of a barrier, whether it's evergreen screening or something to keep the headlights from shining. Now, yeah, it's two properties away, it's a couple hundred feet away, but with the high-intensity lights, the halflined automobiles today, those lights will be shining right on our house when, when the cars are left there idling or warming up, or you're waiting for the kids to come out to take them to school or whatever, because nobody takes the bus anymore, obviously. So that's, that's a concern that we have is, is, is the lights as well, so.
Are you amenable to that?
Thank you very much. I certainly think that this building is an improvement over the building that was there.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm not, not speaking in opposition to the projects at all, that wasn't the reason for my comments, it's really to hopefully make it a better project for everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good comments, thank you.
So it looks like you had some proposed conifer trees in the front, so maybe some along the side of the driveway might also be an option for that kind of screen?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, thanks very much for the comments, appreciate it. We'll, we'll kind of, as we're looking at the plan of divisions discussed tonight, we'll, we'll discuss that and see what we can do to come back at, at that. So, thank you.
That's a really inexpensive fix, too. I mean, I think those, they go for like 50, 60 bucks, probably like five of them.
Yeah, we could see there.
Is there any other public comment, Mr. Chair?
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none?
So just as a point of order, will we just move to continue this to a future meeting? I assume we are all clear on what to expect around the waivers, right? So we just could do a straightforward continuation?
I believe so.
For what it's worth, we, we'll be ready to go as soon as you can accommodate it, so. Whatever you, your first available would be appreciated.
I have an additional question.
Sure.
The drainage.
Hold on a second.
The, the building that's being proposed, in the application it says replacement building, but scaling it off the plans, it's more than three times the size of the previous building?
Yeah.
And, and it was difficult, too, because they're different scales, either way.
Yeah, the existing is different, sorry.
Is there any recharge proposed for the roof?
Uh, we're actually, that front area is, is a recharge, is 100% recharge, which takes the front, your plan today takes the front half of the roof. We are, in response to Mr. Walsh's comments, we are modifying the plan to recharge the back of the roof as well. So it's not going to be in an infiltrate, in, in a plastic chamber, but it is going to be infiltrated. So we are, we are proposing to, actually, we're proposing to infiltrate most of the new impervious area on the site, so.
That's great, and I only ask because this is direct contributory to Cataculumog, which is the cold water fishery, if that makes, probably not any difference, but I'm on stormwater task force, so I have to.
Gotcha.
I have to wear my hat.
Yep.
I'd move that we continue the meeting to April 9th, like continue the hearing to April 9th, if that's amenable.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll just remind the applicant that April 3rd at 4:00 PM is your deadline to submit supplemental and additional information.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Moving on to our third public hearing of the evening, we'll be discussing planning board warrant articles. Do we have a public hearing notice for this one as well?
We do.
Is there a public?
We do somewhere in there, I think.
All right, maybe, hold on. Let me recheck my package here. I do not have any public hearing notice for this.
I guess we'll.
But if we give you one, I'll read it.
Be discussing the proposed warrant articles of the planning board for the May regular town meeting, May of 2018 regular town meeting.
Copy of the warrant article is in here, right?
Yes.
All right, did everybody get the memo from the building inspector today?
Those number one, number two, and number three?
Yeah, there should be five of them.
Last two are single-page. Yeah, this here, you gave this to me, and you should have had that. Did you, do you have that? Oh, you do, all right.
One of you two handed it up with the, one of you two handed it up with the executive meeting.
Oh, okay.
Which I still haven't gotten to read yet.
So I guess, deferred Adam, how we should approach these, one at a time?
Yeah, I, I think the best way to do it is one at a time. I mean, what you have in front of you is the language that we've talked about over the past two years, and what we've, what the five of you have finally agreed on to put forward as articles. One being the use, the uses and the use table, as well as the accessory and design standards within the districts. Two being the overlay districts. Three being the special uses, solar energy and registered marijuana dispensaries. Four being the amendment of the special permit procedures. And five being an amendment to the zoning map. I have some things I would like to add to number five. It will just be some language that will be, I would be proposing the board vote to amend in the, the article, but it tracks with what we've done in one through three, so I, I hope that there's not a big deal with that. You have also a letter I received today, or a memo I received today from the building commissioner outlining some of his comments, concerns, questions that he raises in respect to the documents that were put in front of him. I think some of them are things the board has spoken about, but may wish to have continued conversation about. You do continue to have the ability to modify the article as it is your article, and the warrant has not been printed yet, and what was submitted would not be substantially changed in what he's suggesting in here. I mean, some of it is simple language clarification changes, that's sort of the purpose of this public hearing. So you, you have those opportunities. And I think also there's at least one property owner that would like to speak to the board about Article 1. And so I, you know, that's, I think it would be best to take them one by one, just to, to clarify some of those things. I mean, like I said, the building commissioner's memo sort of jumps back and forth amongst things, but.
You would prefer to take each of the building commissioner's memos in order, or each of the?
I'd take the articles in order.
Okay.
You know, and I mean, if you would like, I think, speaking to the building commissioner's memo.
Do you feel confident you can direct us around them, divide each one of his memos? Because.
Well, the first one was pretty obvious, the use table was.
Yeah, I mean, the, the first one is, is pretty, one, two, three, four, five.
Do we have a copy of this for public consumption?
I do, I have a couple of copies.
If anybody would like a copy of the.
Oh, it's not there, is it? Ah.
No, I like the word small.
No, I like the word flock.
I think I questioned that one myself.
So, you know, we've been over it 10 times. How small is your flock?
Give Dave the rest of the other one. Well, that's not it, Dave, you get all of it.
So the first 14 deal with Article 1. The last three deal with Article 3, and then the two in the middle are Article 2. So I think 1, 3, 4, 5 are what I would say are scrivener's changes, for the most part. They're not substantially changing anything, they're modifying for inclusion in connected areas. Number 1 references section, sections that are in the, the text that, that maybe didn't get pulled back into the use table for a variety of different reasons. What? You look confused, Mr. Proctor.
I am confused. So are you talking about, what do you, what do you mean 1 through 5?
Jeez.
Do you mean each one of these, or just 1 through 5 in this list?
That list, 1, number 1.
Number 1, 1 through 5.
Number 1, number 3.
No, he's saying number 1, 1 through 5.
No, are uses that are included in the articles, in the text of the articles that could be.
Yeah, I thought you said 1.
No, I, I'm sorry, yes, 1 through 5, 1 through 5 in, on the, the memo. Numbers 1 through 5.
Up and down.
Are just text adjustments.
Scrivener's errors.
Well, I would disagree with number 1 being just scrivener's errors.
Well, those are all things that are in there. The first three, cemeteries, municipal building uses, conservation areas, small wastewater treatment, and childcare facilities are all included in Section 4.1 of the zoning bylaw.
Yes.
Which are just not included in the use table. So the suggestion is to include those in the use table.
Mm-hmm.
As they are already included and allowed in all districts.
Okay.
So that's where I say it's a, a scrivener's error, in that it's not changing the substance of anything, it's, it's correcting a written error or omission.
And then you have large solar energy systems and registered marijuana.
Which are both already in the text.
Okay.
And allowed by special permit.
Okay.
But are not included in the use table as they have been associated as a special use previously.
Right.
And I think that, you know, that's a, a valid comment that, you know, kind of, in the way that we structured the process of going through it, I had moved on from the use table and didn't even, got so wrapped up in where we were and the other things, didn't think to, let's put these in the table.
So they're reflected in the text, just not in the use table?
Correct. You know, 2 is essentially just saying that we've gone beyond municipal and called it government, which is a more holistic and widely accepted way of looking at uses, you know, you don't usually just allow government, say, well, the state and feds can't do those things.
Like post offices opposed to a.
Correct, yes. Number 3 is a note on just clarifying the use table, adding a P or a Z for who gives the special permit. And, you know, noting that the blank is a no. You know, and.
Yep.
The building commissioner and I had a discussion, and he's, why didn't you just use N? I said, we talked about that, and we felt that everything filled out was too busy, and he said, well, I wouldn't know what to do with that.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll add, you know, a key to the table that, that clarifies that.
Sad face emoji.
Something like that.
[laughing].
We'll go thumbs up, thumbs down. And then number 4, again, we removed drive-through as a primary use. It remains in the definitions, so what we'll do is we'll remove drive-through from definitions, and that'll realign all of the, all of the lettering. Residential use, that makes sense in the, again, in the text, that's just a clarification word. Same thing with districts. There was a discussion that we had, I don't, I don't even know if you put that in here, but on the use table, adding district to the end of each of the.
It's number 3.
It is number 3.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, and just making sure that that's in there, so it, it clarifies it.
Mm-hmm.
Then from 6 through 14 are, you know, a, a little less, you know, 13 again is just clarifying the word, putting the center in there, which is the actual term for the, the district, the village center district. And then the rest are, I guess, what I would clear is, slight, clarify is slightly more substantial.
Which ones, I'm sorry, where you go?
All of the other ones up to 14.
So the first one is H1.
Yeah. And I don't know if you want to continue doing this, take the resident comment, or the, the landowner comment, and then move on, or?
Do you, sorry, to the public, do you know which article your comments relate to, or?
His relates to Article 1.
Article 1?
Absolutely.
Okay, if you wouldn't, you, if you want to tell us about it now, so we don't overlook it and go past it? And then if you have any more comments, just raise your hand after the fact.
I only have the one.
Okay.
My name's Nick Piro, I reside at 12 Robbs Terrace, I own property at 40 Lemonster Shirley Road. I own multiple businesses based out of Lemonster right now. I bought previously Roland's Towing, two and a half years ago, and in doing so, I provide a service for the police department of involuntarily towing vehicles from accident scenes, unregistered, unlicensed. When I did it, one of Chief Marino's issues was, he wanted me to maintain a storage yard in the town of Lunenburg, so Lunenburg residents would not have to travel out of town to retrieve their vehicles. So at the time, there really wasn't anything in the zoning, and Roland did not want to rent me his pre-existing yard, because it was at his brother's house, so the old Colson rent me his pre-existing yard, because it was at his brother's house, so the old Colson's towing was available for me to rent a parking lot over there. Coincidentally, I'm paying a thousand dollars a month for a parking lot half the size of this room, and I own thirty acres of industrial land right up the street. So, I was looking and talking with the building commissioner the other day, and then coincidentally, Adam, is there's no definition for a vehicle storage yard anywhere in the regulations whatsoever. I don't repair vehicles, I strictly tow them, I own, in my other businesses, I do some other stuff, but the one that I'm looking to do in Lunenburg for a yard out here would be strictly vehicle storage, that I would tow from an accident scene or a police tow. If it was allowed, and I could put up a bigger yard, I also encompassing in that, I do own a repossession business, but I don't fix stuff, I just store vehicles. So, I was kind of looking for a definition, or to have that put somewhere in it. In speaking with different building inspectors and commissioners over the years, it was my understanding and theirs, that they always thought it would fit best in industrial, and that's my opinion, because I don't feel that you would want to be taking a commercial or residential, I mean, that's not where, I mean, you kind of would want to tuck that off to the side. There are going to be some crap, smashed up cars, anything that I tow in that's leaking fluids, I bring back to my Lemmonster yard, we put it in a building with a concrete floor, we drain any fluids that have been compromised, and then it's put outside for storage, so nothing compromises any land. But I'm just kind of looking to see where you guys would like to let me run my business. I'm kind of, it's a service business that goes along with the police department, so it's kind of a necessary evil to have. I know no one wants it in their yard, but my own opinion is, I thought my piece of property would be perfect for it, it's as far away from the center of town as you can get, with two borders on Lemmonster, and it's zoned industrial. I, that's my opinion, where I think it would fit best. So, I'd kind of leave it up to, I'm asking if you guys make a definition, so I can do it legally.
So, what, special permit?
Well, I mean, you'd have to decide that you wanted to define it, and then decide where and how.
So, what if he, what if he just starts doing it?
Then, he would be issued a zoning violation, he'd be given probably thirty days to cease. If he refused after that, then enforcement action would escalate.
Wouldn't that be...
Probably with daily fines, potentially a junction.
There's a fine line between vehicle storage yard and a junkyard.
Yeah.
There is?
All my vehicles leave, I do not dismantle vehicles, yeah, some of them are, some of them are junk, and I get stuck with them for a while, but then I sell them to a local junkyard, I'm not a dismantler.
Yeah, so, I mean, a special permit, and you call it something like a temporary towing storage facility, and you do it by special permit, and you limit how long you can store the vehicles on the property, or something like that, and, you know...
Each vehicle.
Or what?
That, sometimes, it's not at my discretion, that sometimes they're on police hold, stuff like that, I mean, it's not, and I can understand you wanting to set limits in there, and it's not my manner of business to keep stuff around, but I could see some of, in past, if you look at old tow companies, they have a way of just accumulating stuff.
Yeah, I'm just spitballing, you know, what it would look like.
Well, so, if this is something the board's interested in, I can have a proposal for you in the next couple of days on the definition, including, you know, limits, it sounds as if industrial would be the most appropriate place for it, probably by special permit. And, you know, the question then becomes, oftentimes, these types of businesses become junkyards, but sometimes they're not just junkyards, sometimes they're not just vehicle storage yards, sometimes they're a full-blown tow operation, where there's a storage yard for the associated equipment, there's a building that may or may not provide limited or unlimited repairs. And again, not that that necessarily makes it good or bad, it just, it's to what degree do you want to allow it, or not allow it? Do you want it to just be a paved yard with a fence around it? Do you want it to potentially be a revenue generating or neighborhood destroying business? Not that either of these are always the case, but they certainly have the potential to go in...
Let's discuss that some more.
If you did this, if you did this in limited business residential, and you said, oh, well, tow yard, I mean, that could certainly have a significant impact. Towing happens twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
All right, but we're talking about in the industrial use.
Correct, and again, I'm not suggesting that...
I don't think that we, what I'm saying is, in order to provide at least some level of satisfaction, some level of acceptability, we define it as a special use, and then we come up with, we can come up with, you know, our own limits, and if those limits, you know, happen to, if they hurt your business, and you have to move some things, you know, after six months, that's not my problem, you know what I mean?
Twenty-five acres there, I would love to put up a building there.
Okay.
Right now, most of my property that I own, for my businesses, is in Lemmonster. If I could rent out one of the garages I'm in now, I would love to put up a new facility, because that would give me some revenue to come in to be able to afford to do that right now.
Yeah.
Right now, my main concern is, I've been paying a thousand a month rent for an extremely small parking lot, which is driving me crazy, seeing as I own twenty-five acres of land a half mile up the street.
How big of an area are you thinking for this storage?
Right now, which would stop me from paying rent if I cleared off an area this big. Ideally, going forward, the piece of property that I run my business off of in Lemmonster right now is six acres. I don't feel as though I need anything that large right now, but if I could eventually put up a garage or a building that I could warehouse, I also sell, wholesale caskets, and own a plowing company, so if I could put up a big warehouse to be able to store caskets on, and then put in a big fenced-in area behind it, I'm not trying to put this right out for everyone to see it on the street either. There's a certain amount of discretion I like to have with it there, you know.
And again, I'm just putting out there that this isn't a paved pad with a chain-link fence around it, there's, there's certain expanse that could happen...
Well, you see what my point is, though, we're talking about two different, I mean, I don't, he doesn't, he's not here with a plan before us.
No, correct.
You know what I'm saying, so...
That's spot zoning.
Yeah.
I'm not looking to change zoning, I'm just looking to have a definition of this, because it did, everywhere I've been looking for the last year and a half to buy a piece of commercial property, I look at them, because that's where Mike Savageo had said at the point, he goes, well, all the other places are in commercial, I'm like, well, just because they're there, doesn't mean they belong there, that's where they've just been for a very long time.
Yeah.
And every piece of commercial property I found, it didn't make sense to put it there. I mean, it made sense to me, but obviously, it's up to you as to where it should go.
Yeah.
I just thought industrial was twenty-four hours a day, not usually next to houses.
Yeah.
I mean, and, yes, there is a house right next to my industrial property, but it's also right across from Powell's and that gas station and Ecological Fibers, it's that hill right there.
I think there's a big chunk of, most of, I'd say, most...
Is that the, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, most of the town, I think, comes into the town, like, using this road, right? Isn't Seventy kind of the primary mode in, other than Lemmonster Road, right?
If you were coming into Lunenburg, and you would come there, you would usually take the right onto Lemmonster Road, and my property starts there and goes up to the Lemmonst, it borders Lemmonster on...
Seventy is rowing, but it's really, you know what I mean?
Yeah, if you came down Lemmonster Road, there's the for-sale sign there, which has had zero interest, but it starts there and goes up to the Lemmonster line.
I don't support, I, let me rephrase, I don't support, I would be concerned that a lot of residents would not support the visuals of this.
Well, it's the same as a wastewater treatment plant, or multiple things, it's a service, though, that needs to happen for a town to run.
And I believe, I've seen places, I mean, the one on Seventy that was there, you know, they did a pretty good job of screening that, you know, given the volume of cars they had in there. But, you know, we could, again, that's something that we can work into the special permit process, not necessarily...
Building a new business, it'd be nice to tuck it away where it wasn't seen from the street.
So, I don't know, do we need a specific definition, any special permit that goes specifically with that particular use? I don't, I don't know if we need that, you know what I mean?
You would need a definition of the use to be able to zone it.
Right.
And then, when you get the special permit application, you would, it would be a discretionary permit, like any other special permit.
Right.
Where you're looking at the merits of each individual application, and how they fit into the specific site, the specific neighborhood.
Right.
And all of the other fun bits and pieces that go into it.
So, really, we're just looking for a definition?
How did the auto yard actually get, Ian, was that before that was...
The auto yard.
The one that used to be there, that converted to the construction?
Colson's, behind, behind Powell's.
That was there for a long...
I would expect that it probably pre-existed zoning.
Pre-existed zoning, okay.
And most tow yards throughout the years have been an accessory to a repair facility. We're kind of unique, where we don't fix cars, I mean, Aldrich is a body shop, and he started towing to supplement that, and his towing company has grown, Mass Ave, as well as Victory Lane, I mean, I think they were just there for so long, and they were accessory businesses, but usually their main business was something in the auto, whether it be selling parts or repairing the vehicles.
So, could you get us some definitions?
Yes, I'll get you some by the end of the week.
Yeah, I think that would help. I don't think anybody, is anybody opposed to, you know, including it as a, on the use table?
I think that we need to, I think, I think this needs to be something that's fully explored, besides just defining it, I think we really need to dig into this, because I think there's, there's two sides for me on this. One is, I don't support a lot of regulations, you know, so, it's like, for us to say, yes, this is allowed, and then we're going to give you this really rigid list, so essentially we're designing it for you, I would, I would be opposed to that, because I think that you have to have a lot of freedom as a business owner to be creative, and that we shouldn't be designing projects, you know, for business owners, so that's one side. But the other side of it is, I think that there, there is a potentially resonant concern, because this is an entryway into the town, that maybe this isn't something that people want to see. I don't have the answer to that, so I would like to get the answer to that, that second question first, and, you know...
Well, I wouldn't say we'd be going site by site, I mean, I'm looking at the industrial zone.
Yeah, you're looking, I understand that you're not looking just for you, like, we're not making this a specific zoning role just for you, I mean, that's a special permit, right? But I, I think that what, I think, I think, is anyone unclear?
I understand what you're saying, but if it's not on the use table, it's prohibited.
Correct.
So, I think what you're saying is, is we need to identify what it is as a use, and then how it should be instituted with as little regulation as possible?
That is exactly what I'm saying.
But we would need to add some new regulation in there, because of the environmental impacts of the potential leakage, and because it is an emergency on-call, it's going to be all hours a day, they need to be screened.
But it, but we have it already as an accessory use for an auto, an auto shop.
Yeah, so, what I'm saying is, you know, I think, I think you're, I think you're getting ahead of yourselves, like, we're almost like evaluating his, his plan, and he doesn't even have one yet.
Again, yeah.
It's, yeah, I mean, just as when Unitil went in, right, we realized that they had, they were going to be dealing with hazardous chemicals, and they would have to come up with some kind of a detention system, et cetera, you know, some way of disposal, you know, auto mechanic shops have to come up with the same system for oil, waste oil, and those kinds of things, so, I don't, you know, in the, I think, well, certainly, we could have a discussion about which zone it would appropriately be placed in, but I don't, you know...
And I'm all about protecting, I mean, it's my property, so I don't want to contaminate my property, so we...
We won't let you.
But we were one of the first people in the area that would start, if something was leaking, bring it in. Not every tow company does this, a lot of people just come in, shake it off their truck, or the people would throw down speedy dry and don't pick it up. We try to have our employees pick it up, and return the accident scene back to pre-accident condition.
Yeah.
We have contracts with Clean Harbors, we send back any drained fluids, any contaminated speedy dry.
But without getting into all that, I think what you're asking us is, choose, choose a zone to put it in, and let me do my business somewhat.
But I think the concern with that, and this, is that if you say that this is now an allowable use in an industrial zone, which I'm not, I could support that, but if we say this is allowable use in an industrial zone now, any business owner is going to look at this use, come before us with a plan, and then we're going to start imposing all these restrictions on what they can and cannot do, because of, for a lot of different reasons, because we have the flexibility to do it. I would rather us come up with those kind of parameters, so that a business owner doesn't have to get this thing re-engineered a thousand times to meet the whims of a board.
Design standards.
Exactly.
Design standards.
That we come up with some design standards that coincide with this increased use, which is not something I think we can do.
Without over-regulating.
Without over-regulating, but some clear standards, but I don't think we can do this in the next week or two. I mean, I think this is a lot, to me, a lot more time than what can be accomplished before a town meeting.
I guess I have one more question. If I opened up an extremely small repair facility, am I allowed to store my cars there? I mean, I'm trying to come forth and ask this, I guess, all these other companies are doing it, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here, I'm just, I'm trying to get off of paying rent, where I'm already paying taxes, you know, eight thousand dollars a year in taxes on a piece of property, that's just been vacant, I've been paying taxes on it for, since I bought it twenty years ago, I paid back taxes and paid nothing but taxes for twenty years.
Yeah, I think, I think the first question that we need to answer is whether or not we agree that it's an allowable use somewhere in our town, and if we can agree that, then we, to that, then we have to find a spot for it.
Well, I think that's already been made clear, because the chief of police has requested, if not required him to have, that facility in town, so, and, and if you want to go ahead and try to get it under the guise of the police as a municipal use?
Well, it's a service, I mean, it's kind of like...
It is, it is, I agree.
So, yeah, I mean, so, I think that's step one, Mr. Chair, is that we figure out, you could take a vote, or whatever, you know, we need to do to, find out whether it's going to be an allowable use.
I don't think you could go to municipal, because not every tow company would necessarily tow for a police department, so that might be...
You'd have to lease from them, so...
You have to think about every future business owner, not just the one in front of us, and are we being clear enough for all of them? And just saying something is allowable, to me, isn't clear enough. I think that, I think this has to come with some, to me, really minimalistic design standards, that someone in your position doesn't go engineer this for forty, fifty thousand dollars, come before us, and then go back and re-engineer, because you're not in a, I would assume that most people in the business that you're into, you're not trying to engineer anything for a hundred thousand dollars, that you'd rather come before us, the pretty simple plan, and get this thing through. So, I think we can accomplish that with design standards.
I was kind of hoping for zero engineering.
Well, so, I guess the first thing we need to do is decide whether we want to make it a use, we don't have, we can have discussion, we don't have to add it to the warrant, either tonight or at the next meeting. So, I think initiating the process of exploring it, as Michael Ray said, is the first thing we should do. I've been pretty consistent, saying I don't want to outright prohibit anything, I'm always willing to hear, you know, any application, I think Adam even predicted the first thing we're going to get is something that we didn't think of, and this kind of proves that.
I want to explore that a little bit. So, if it's not in the use table, and it's not in our guidelines, what is the process of him being able to do? Just go to the ZB?
It's prohibited.
It's...
It's prohibited and allow use variances in Lunenburg.
No use variants.
So, he could write a citizen petition to define it and include it in the use table?
He's not a resident, though.
Well, what's that?
Oh, he is a resident of Robbs Hill.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And even if he weren't a resident, he could find a resident to sponsor it, and he could write the petition, have them sign it, and then it would be added to a town meeting warrant by, you know, there's no, there's no saying no, the planning board would obviously have, to have a special, have a hearing on the warrant article, because it's a zoning change, and then it would go through the normal, you know, procedure at town meeting.
I would prefer us initiate the discussion and have it amongst ourselves, Annie.
Of course. I mean, there's multiple things that it could be questionable in, but there's not one thing that, it's not a used car lot, it's, I'm not a repair facility, I don't fix cars. I guess if there was the way around it that said, you can't just do it, you need to put up a garage, well, ideally, I would like to do that at some point, I mean, you know, if that's what's required, you say you got to put up a small garage to be able to do it, and even if you do selective work, you know, I just, I'm looking for, I'm looking to do it the right way, I'm not trying to pull a fast one or anything like that.
It makes perfect sense, but I think we just have to also think about the next guy.
I honestly don't see too many people wanting to get into the towing business.
But, but we have to, I think, be prepared for anyone in your position, and are we clear enough?
Yeah.
So, you're asking if we support this, right, if we think this is an acceptable use, is that your question?
I think what we're saying is, can we, can we get some information from Adam, and then review, takes, can we take some time with this, and, you know...
Yeah, take some time, I mean, I'm just coming to you guys with this today.
Yeah.
It's just something that I've been paying rent for a long time, and taxes, and it's...
So, this is the beginning of a discussion?
I think there could be a clear distinction between indoor car storage and outdoor, because we have indoor storage right on 2A, and outdoor car storage, I think special permit is the way to go.
Yeah.
And I think we can impose some design standards without being overly restrictive.
Well, I'd like to get some more information on what others do, because, you know, like he's saying, you know, there could...
Just so you know, I have no problem with, I mean, six-foot fence, barbed wire, lighted yard, I mean, these are things that I need to do to run my business for the contracts I have with state and different banks anyway. You know, it's either going to be eight feet without barbed wire, or six feet with barbed wire, lighted, and stuff like that, so, I mean, it's not like I'm just trying to put mean, it's not like I'm just trying to put up a clearer spot and just dump some cars over there.
I think, you know, we try to, I think, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but we're, we're trying to do, a lot of times, is balance, because, like you said, you may have a residential neighbor nearby. We're trying to balance, you know, the needs that you have as a business owner with what they're going to have to see and live with. And to try and make those two things livable for both of you is where we kind of, that's where it sort of starts to get dicey all the time.
But, but I totally understand. If I lived, I, I would just think that people who live in an industrial zone would
Would understand, sure.
Would understand a little bit, and it is a very main road. But I'm not looking to put something right there for it to be an eyesore.
No, I agree, but, you know, there are things like within our current bylaws that allow them certain things that you, you may not be aware of, that we're, we might even want to modify a little bit because of the specific nature of what you're proposing to do as a business. So for instance, with, oh, the name's gone right out of my head. The fabric.
Echo Fibers.
Echo Fibers. They have a neighbor, and their
There is right in between.
Their trucks are always backing it. So we needed a, a row of trees there, you know, to interrupt their lighting, you know, that kind of thing. And, you know, dark sky compliance stuff, you know, how's that going to play with your business? All that stuff's going to, eventually, when you get a plan, you know, come into play. So those are things we need to consider.
All right. I think, hopefully, we've, you felt like we've heard you.
No, that's fine.
And I appreciate you paying attention and bringing this to our attention, because I hate, would hate for somebody to have a business model and look at our use table and say, there's no room for me in any, in any capacity.
Yeah.
Max, one question.
Sure.
I've been assuming that. Are you looking to get this changed for this town meeting?
Well, if there was something that you saw on your use table that this could add to, when I looked through them quickly and just kind of went over them, I mean, my other businesses are masonry supplies and plowing and sanding, which I don't currently run in the town of Lunenburg right now. The two pieces of property I own in town is the 25 acres there, and I own an 18-acre residential piece in town where I live. So I didn't know. Some of the other stuff that I currently do in Lemmester would fall under contractor yard and stuff like that. So I didn't know if there was something that you looked at and said, well, it kind of goes along with this.
As an accessory use?
As an accessory use to a repair facility. I'm just looking for some, there's absolutely nothing on there.
It would be an auxiliary use for an auto repair facility. Outdoor storage is allowed with proper screening. But we don't allow auto repair facilities in the
Industrial.
Industrial.
In industrial, I knew there was inside storage, but I didn't want to put up a building just to store all the cars inside. That didn't make financial sense.
All right, I guess the question, thank you. The question of the board is, are we in favor of pursuing researching this?
I'm in favor of researching this. I'm not in favor of adding this definition, though, to the table without researching it.
I would agree with that. That's exactly
So it sounds like it would be a fall.
Probably, yeah.
That would be my inclination as well.
It just because of timing, we don't seem to have the time.
I totally understand. I just didn't know if when you looked at there, if somebody had a light bulb that said, hey, what, you know, we think it could go here. That's all.
No.
All right. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Which is, which is interesting, because, like, we don't allow a gas station in industrial either.
Would that bring new gas station in the industrial?
Really? It would be a violation of our
Wow. I believe that's actually not zoned industrially, though.
Is it right next door to it?
I think that one corner is commercial.
Right on the border?
Yeah, that one corner is, is commercial. That corner and Powell.
Yeah, I'd say across the street, too.
There's a little blob of commercial.
Have you considered selling and buying another?
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, just that, that's the only piece of property on that side of the road that's, that's commercial. They
It's funny how that works.
Spot zone is parking.
No, it's, well, no, because it's connected. So change to benefit one person, it was an extension of an existing zone that had a greater public good.
Someone was planning for a store to be there to service those factories with that strip.
Someone was planning for Dunkin' Donuts to be there to serve all the commuters driving by.
Thank you.
Thank you. He's talking about this piece of property right here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think there's too much slop on that to make much of it.
So H1 appears to allow for an accessory dwelling. Back to number six, yes?
Yes, on any lot where dwelling units are allowed. He's, the building commissioner is recommending that the condominium conversion would be potentially problematic in enforcing the conditions. So he's recommending that H1. Oh, yeah, okay, that's back in the, so he's recommending that there be some inclusion of a singular owner provision, where the property remaining with the singular owner.
So this gas station here is, or is there, is the gas station actually
Can we number these for town meeting?
King's Corner?
For the residents?
No, right here.
This is going to be not easy for them to follow if they
Right across the street.
Wait, H1, where?
H1, right after the use table, residential uses.
Right after.
H1.
Quite right, right?
Yeah, in the definitions. The use table is G. The page after the last page of the use table. Top of the page.
Residential one.
Yeah, I remember we had a lot of discussion on that, and a lot of it was had to do with in-law apartments and
H residential, I see it now.
People having the ability to move their parents in and whatnot.
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion about that.
And I think that was one of the concerns our, the previous building inspector had addressed of, at one point.
You know, when I think
And that falls in with ownership model, that we can't control ownership model, so.
But I think having
All right, I'm sorry, are we back on H1?
Yes. So you're suggesting that we put something in there
Yeah.
That does, that does not allow it to become
Yeah, my suggestion is, right where we say one of the units shall be occupied by the owner of the property, I think we should say both units shall be owned by the same person.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We can't do that?
No, we can.
Doesn't that control ownership model? What if they want to make them condos and sell one out?
Well, it controls ownership model in that you're making this an accessory dwelling. You're not making it a primary dwelling.
Not a secondary.
So I think, what I'll probably, what I would propose would say
How about just where it says a secondary dwelling owned by whatever, yeah, the very definition in the beginning.
Owned by the same owner.
Where it says accessory dwelling, colon, a secondary dwelling.
Or a single owner may.
Well, what's wrong with, with and clearly subordinate to a primary dwelling? That's pretty obvious to me.
Because you could still have
Well, just say both dwellings owned by the same owner.
Well, what I was going to do is, is where it says, with the, where you pointed out originally, both dwelling units shall be owned by a singular owner, one of which shall be occupied by the owner.
That sounds fine to me.
Just to keep with, you know, it's, it doesn't become a, a rental property that happens to have one big and one small.
Yep.
Well, if one's occupied by the owner, that doesn't imply that you can't rent it out.
No, but they'll both be owned by the same owner. The idea is you can't sell the other unit.
Okay, owned by one, but occupied.
Because if the property, even in condos, the property is generally owned by a singular entity.
Yeah.
But multiple people control that entity.
Right. In other words, I can have an accessory dwelling on my property, and I can rent it to somebody, but I can't sell it to somebody and make it like a condo.
So one of the units shall be occupied by the owner and both owned? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Both units shall be owned in common, and one of the units shall be occupied by the owner of the property.
Okay, so, yeah, just putting it in front.
Yep. Okay, so that's that one.
Broadly defines fill, N3, in a residential district, and he's suggesting it be accessory only to a building project, which I think makes perfect sense.
Other uses.
No dirt farms.
Correct. Or no fill lots.
Right, right.
Yeah, no fill lots, yes.
We don't want to be Uxbridge.
Oh.
So I would add, in earth fill, it would say the addition fill or grading for any purpose associated with an approved permit.
Got to put the big dig somewhere, dude.
No, I think that's fine. I, I remember discussing this, and, and recommending that it wasn't a, a primary use, so.
So isn't Keating's doing that? Isn't that what Keating's does?
No, they take it out.
Oh, they take it out.
Well, they take it out of one spot, and they pile it in another.
They process it in the other.
And then they pile it.
Well, but they're not filling the lot. They're taking that dirt elsewhere to make lovely roads and parking lots and basements.
Right, but I mean, basically, the idea is you don't want to see those big mounds of material.
No, the idea is that someone doesn't own a lot that is 10 feet below grade, and they spend 10 years letting everybody who digs a foundation hole, or excavates something, bring the fill in, and dump it there, and compact it and lifts a little bit here and there, and then all of a sudden, hey, look, my lot's the same height as the road, let's start building on it. You don't become a spoils lot for continued fill as a primary use. Whereas if someone owned that lot and said, I want to build
Yeah, that would be more considered gravel processing anyway, as opposed to fill.
You know, someone gets a permit to build their widget shop, and they need to build the property up five feet. The fill that they bring in would be associated with the site plan approval for that widget shop, as opposed to, I'm going to fill it indefinitely until someone comes along and says, hey, I'm going to offer you money to build something here.
So you're looking to add in, where are we looking to add in language to N4, similar to the one for N3?
Correct.
Are we all in agreement on that? Seems like it.
Wait.
We're getting there. We're getting to 11. I can't wait.
Oh, he's looking at number eight.
All right, we're at kennels. Here come the animals.
Go on, you're on four. Earth removal.
Oh, yeah, earth removal, just, we'll, we'll match it to, to what, chapter 147.
Right, so that, they covered there?
Great.
All right, so N4.
All right, kennels.
And I would say nine would be the same.
Chapter 110.
Yep.
Instead of using the, do we, do we match the language, or do we just refer to the code, the chapter?
Let me look at it, and I'll have something for you for, for the next meeting. Because I'm meeting with town council next week to sit down and go over these. So, I mean, I'm going to recommend that we do the talk now, continue the hearing until the 9th, because we still have plenty of time to do the yeas, nays, happy dance. And that way, if, if there's other things that come up with town council, we can address them at that point as well.
I would like to request that Mr. Bernie recuse himself from number 10.
I'm not a decision maker.
I know.
You know, I, I think it's, it's a point well taken. This is language that currently exists.
Yeah.
But mandating another independent agency to do something is outside of our, well, just generally poor form, whether it's inside or outside.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Could we, could we say something about self-contained?
Isn't that, oh, Board of Health to determine.
I'm fine with that, taking the Board of Health off and just leaving it to the building inspector.
Yeah, I mean, the, the building inspector is going to, there's things that he can't determine, you know, that
But then he'll just seek
Correct, which would be
He would, but he would be the authority to that decision.
Correct. He would be the condemned, he would be the condemned, to coin a phrase from a previous president.
Can we get him a black cape and a
Yeah, and a hood, yeah.
Yikes.
What is this? Here we go, number 11.
You know, we've tried to get rid of this one. Why can't we can't get rid of this one?
Well, what's funny is, before the meeting, Greg looked at me and said, I thought we took small out.
That's got to be, that's got to be Michael Ray that left it in there.
Very strongly about that.
You know, and
But I mean, chickens they should have. I think, I, I agree that small is not a clear enough word. However, I think that we should leave an unclear word in the bylaw. I think that we all can agree. I think reasonable minds can come to reasonable decisions on what small means. And if you're allowed to have a small flock, and you got 50 roosters, I don't think anyone's going to say that that's a small flock, you know? And that's really, I think, the nuisance point that I think this bylaw is trying to address. So I think that small is a pretty reasonable language, so.
And I'll, I'm not going, I'm not going to advocate one way or the other, because ultimately, you five decide. What I will say is, you said two critical words in your description of, of why small should stay, that don't have any business in government. Reasonable and agreement. And especially when it comes to zoning, and words that are not empirically defined. Because what will happen is, at some point, someone will have what they've decided is a small flock.
Right.
And their neighbor will complain, and the building commissioner will go out there and go, you know, this isn't really, it's probably a medium flock. And they'll hire their attorney, and the attorney will come in and say, so, my client had 25 chickens on one acre, and you determined that that wasn't a small flock. What's a small flock? Well, not 25. Well, is it 10?
So that's interesting, though. Could we, could we contact Kathy, or
Maybe we could ask our AdCom liaison.
Ask AdCom, and you can, you know, you can cross that with
There are ways to determine
Animal, animal control officer, and say, you know, interestingly, this has come up. How many complaints did we get? How many chickens? Are too many chickens?
And you could do it by number of residents. You could do it by lot size.
Board of Health might be able to help as well.
Currently governed by different areas of the residential. Residence A is different from Residence B is different from outlying. Outlying, they say, without limitation. Residence B, they say something about moderate, and then Residence A, it has to be consumed by the homeowners.
No, they're all under the same code right now.
No, they're not. Well, maybe you've changed, maybe it's changed.
Because in
Well, this is accessory, accessory use.
But in the, in the current code
I think we have a rare comment from the public, so I'd like to have him actually put him up and speak before I shut him off and get him discouraged and
Why is he hanging out here?
So, let's, let's give him the opportunity to speak.
Because they moved the school committee meeting to
Oh.
He received the notice. David Passios, 56 Whiting Street. I was just going to make a comment, because some, I've had some discussion with a few people just recently on this topic, and it has to do with retailing birds versus what you guys are talking about. But, and again, I have not researched this, but I have been told that there is supposedly a state regulation for businesses selling birds that the minimum flock is five. They have to purchase five. They should be purchasing five minimum.
Okay.
I don't know how this might work into your
Thank you.
Consideration here.
Thank you.
I apologize, Matthew. The, as a use, you're correct. There is different standards. But I believe in the accessory uses, it lists them differently.
If people go online, if people go online and they order some chickens from Murray, 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 whatever it's called, you, I think the minimum order size is like 15, right?
After April 15th, because of the temperature. After April 15th, because of the temperature.
Okay.
Before, right, after, they don't typically have a minimum.
So, you know, I, I guess what I'm saying is, how many chickens can someone get at a time? And, you know, you know, I think I bought 75 this past year and, and lost most of them to coyotes, but
Yeah, so since this is a regulation that kind of, I think, inherently takes in nuisance and other things, I think we should talk to the animal control officer and see what, is there's a typical, you know, somebody doing something typically that, that caught, you know, raises the ire of their neighbors, you know?
Well, this is, don't forget, this is an accessory use for a relatively small property.
Yeah.
Right.
So otherwise, they're protected under 48, section three, right?
Right.
So the question is, you know, if you have a small property that doesn't have much land, what do you want to allow?
Well, Greg, you raised...
And I don't think we're talking about prohibiting it or allowing it. We're just talking about small. So I think eliminating it.
Yeah, it's funny, we're talking, we're all concerned about the difference between five chickens and 10 chickens, but we don't care about 12 horses.
That's exactly what I was getting at.
I mean, that's a pretty big stable for a half acre.
Honestly, with horses, you get into a different standard, because then they fall into the barn inspections, which I imagine the Board of Health may be able to expand upon a little bit more. But there are, there are exercise requirements for horses, for how many horses are capable to be stored in one place. There's housing requirements that require a specific type of shelter and watering and space for them to be housed in.
Yeah, you couldn't get the Budweiser team on a quarter acre lot, so...
For non-commercial use, so they're not going to be selling them.
Because they're not town regulations.
What's that? Those are state regulations, yes. That's part of, the animal, I believe in Lunenburg, and maybe not, but we have, at least have someone. There's the animal inspector who goes and goes to all the barns. Like, they would go to Stillman's, and they do an annual inspection that they mail directly back to the state, to, I believe it's Department of Ag. And, you know, they check and make sure that all the animals are healthy and kept in a reasonable way and that the structures are up to code for the regulations. They have the right amount of space and all that kind of stuff. And horses would fall into that. I don't know that chickens do.
Because there's no requirement in town, so I don't even know they...
They know.
All right, I think before we beat a dead horse for lack of...
Sounds like small steak.
Well, you have livestock and other...
I think we've given this an abundance of discussion throughout the past two and a half years.
Small stays?
Does, who thinks striking the word would be?
No, I like it.
I like it.
You like small.
In the absence of something else.
Well, again, it's for non-commercial use, so that means they're not able to raise them itself.
Why don't we just put a number on small and make it easier?
Would reasonable make any more sense to you?
That's what he just said before.
Reasonable based on lot size or acreage?
I think small works, because I mean, you know, if you start, if we start going into how many per acre, what if it's, you know, someone has one acre that's fully clear, the other person has an acre that's mostly wooded, you know?
It's great for chickens. They love ticks.
So, so I think, you know, I don't know, are we having a problem with this? Is anyone aware of complaints about the size?
There's been like four complaints in the last four years at AgCom.
Can you put it under someone's jurisdiction and say, small as defined by whomever? As defined by, you know, the building inspector or the Board of Health?
What do we think small is?
Ultimately, what happens is, by putting this in the zoning bylaw, small becomes the problem of the building inspector. And what the building inspector is saying, he doesn't want that problem.
Correct.
Not because he doesn't want to enforce regulations.
Yeah.
He doesn't want to be required to arbitrarily determine what small is.
Okay.
Because it creates a situation where someone appeals him and he loses. And then there's this issue of now small is defined as X or less.
Yeah, 150 is not a small flock of chickens, so I would definitely, you gotta do something. Five?
Five is a little...
Two per person is the average for egg production. A person eats two eggs a day.
Most chickens don't lay two eggs a day.
Two chickens per person. You get one per chicken.
So why don't we...
It would be a family of four with eight chickens.
Why don't we say a flock consisting of...
If I wanted to feed my family eggs, I have chickens, and we have seven.
But you can't discriminate against the people with 12 kids, you know?
Yeah, can you say a flock of one chicken per family member?
What? That's way too...
I think we're diving way too deep into this. I think Board of Health, I think animal control, I think there's many other mechanisms in place that can limit, I mean, if you were going to get chickens, would you look at the bylaw and say, oh, jeez, I can only get this many because of the bylaws?
No, but if someone complains about a neighbor that has too many chickens...
Getting it and buying them.
He's asking...
To play with the...
Hey, you got 30 chickens, and the bylaws is you can only have 15.
He's asking for guidance. I say two chickens per person or whatever, you know what I mean?
Ain't too low.
Yeah, I think that's too few.
I think if you want to have 15 chickens, why not? I mean...
Because a lot of people will slaughter them over the course of the winter. I mean, and they're going to lose their eggs. Well, they don't lay much.
That's incorrect.
Yeah.
I think 15 is more than reasonable. It's almost a big flock.
Yeah, all right.
I was thinking a dozen, but...
Baker's dozen?
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street again. Just so I'm clear in my head before I make too many comments, is this in a residential area or...
Yes.
Residential and now...
Property, meaning a property that's not covered by Mass 40...
In other words, it's not five acres or so?
Right, or outlying, yeah.
No, 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 according to our bylaws, in Residence A, it's not more than six acres, not, not, six acres in Res A.
It says chapter 40, section 3.
We don't abide by that.
Right, but this says chapter 40, section 3.
Well, if you look at our bylaw, it requires also the additional minimum zoned acreage in the zoning area.
Okay, so regardless of what our bylaw says about that, what we're saying is if you have any resident or outlying property as an auxiliary use, you can have chickens that are not exempt under 40A Section 3, which calls out, I believe, two acres.
So we're only talking about Res A and Res B, honestly?
We're talking about Resident A being an outline.
Not outlying, because it says without limitation, and it's not an accessory use.
Can I ask a question? Could we do a small...
It's not an accessory use.
It already is without limitation, outline.
Can you, can you...
All right, so it's A and B, less than two acres, is what we're talking about.
Can we say, can we say 15 without a special permit?
Six.
All right, I think we're going off the rails here. Let's, we're having some side discussions.
Can I just add my comment, then you guys can bicker on the number all night if you want?
I really don't.
My thought process goes to the 4H. I grew up in Lunenburg, over on Highland Street. We had one of the older houses in town with one point something acres. We had a shed in the backyard. I raised up to 45 chickens at any one time. I think half of them were meat birds, and the others were egg layers, and that was on an annual basis. Of course, the egg layers were longer than that. There was a large chicken farm right behind our property in those years also. So I'm just concerned that you consider whether or not, whatever you come up with, would limit a 4H project.
I agree, and that's why I think it's so important to keep this small. You know, I lived next to a dairy farm growing up, and I think they had about 40 something cows. It would have been a shame if they can have 40 something, and they have a lot of land, but 40 something cows, and somehow 16 chickens is too much next door. You know, I think this is one of those areas that we shouldn't over-regulate. I think small is broad. We know, I know it's hard to enforce, but if it's a problem, you're going to hit other areas. You're going to hit a health issue, and you're hitting, you're hitting some other problems. But, you know, and I don't think that the small is really going to be the trigger. There's going to be other issues.
What do you think?
We also need to consider that this is a right-to-farm community.
Yeah. And I don't want to, because I think that once we start the process, the next thing is now we're going to become, you know, how many roosters you can have, and, you know...
There'll be lots of roosters.
That's the gist of my question. Who many thinks the word small makes it too limiting? I'm not, I don't want to make it limiting.
Yeah.
Why don't we just remove a small flock completely? And then it's just keeping of poultry, saddle horses, livestock, or other farm animals for non-commercial use.
I think that's the answer.
And then, like, we're not declaring any size of any of those items.
That's not bad.
I think that small sets a idea of, the concept here is to have a small flock, which I think is important to say.
Well, I think differentiating between the outlying areas and unlimited and the Residence A and B as an accessory use. I mean, unlimited means that you could have, you could have an egg ranch in unlimited.
That would be commercial.
Okay, you're right.
All right, I guess, how much time do we want to spend on this tonight? Because we got to go home at some point. We aren't going to continue, so we can...
What do you want to do?
I think we should move on.
Okay.
I would move that we take small flock of, a small flock of. A small flock of.
Do we want to take a straw poll?
I don't support that.
I would second his motion.
Any discussion?
The raising or keeping of poultry, saddle horses, livestock for non-commercial use. Yeah, you know what? I would, yeah, it's still an accessory use.
There's a motion and a second and room for minimal discussion.
That was my discussion.
So we're taking out small.
A small flock.
Taking out a small flock of. So it just says, keeping of poultry, saddle horses, livestock, or other farm animals for non-commercial use, which I think is more the key word there, because you will argue that if you have too many chickens, that it could be argued to be commercially used.
Yeah, what are you doing with all those eggs?
What are you going to do with it?
With 100 chickens.
So it's not just a small flock of?
Yeah.
Yeah, a small flock of.
Oh, yeah.
Strike the whole.
I totally agree with that.
So it just says...
That was the motion and the second.
That was the motion and the second. Sorry, Marjorie. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
What is the motion?
To remove a small flock of.
Yes, got it.
All in favor?
No.
Aye.
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 Aye, and one opposed. Thank you.
Okay, we only spent a half hour on that one, though.
That's like up to hour five figuratively.
This is like a workshop level here.
Wow.
So the next one, number 12, is really broad across the board. And it goes into something I think we've talked about a little bit of, and I think he's sort of touched on in a little bit greater capacity, is some of the design standards in here are prescriptive on how sites are laid out. And the building commissioner feels that sometimes those might be better served as part of regulations as opposed to part of the bylaw, giving the board power to have some wiggle room. He's called out a few examples. So I guess I put that to you either to ponder. I don't know that shifting this around for annual town meeting would be efficient or successful. But it's there for you to consider, and if it's something that you feel strongly about, we can, we can do several things. We can try and shift it around for annual. We can recognize that it's something that the board may wish to take up and start shifting it either for special in the fall or for annual next year and come up with a more robust rules and regulations document. Or you can say, no, we like it where it is, and tally ho, move forward.
Actually, I have a question on this. I don't think 45B2A actually requires, would have caused the car wash to not be compliant, because the front of the car wash is facing the building.
And I guess, I think, I think he's being provocative.
Yeah.
In that, what is the front of a building? Does the front of a building have to be the widest part? Is the front of the building where you enter the building?
Well, yeah, that's right. It's kind of the definition of an entrance.
The front of the building is the visual front of the building as perceived by the planning board.
The street-facing.
Well, but, no, but if they have, if they have a front door on that building, is that the entrance, or is the rear, the garage doors in the back? Which is the entrance?
Well, there's doors in the front, too.
Right, exactly.
And again, I don't think he's looking to chastise you, saying that you did something incorrect. I think he's more putting food for thought out there of, you know, if someone comes in and I say this, then they say this, and, you know, having that, that sort of general conceptual argument.
The trouble is that we go back and forth on this. So one of the, one of the challenges that we have had with the bylaws in the past is that they were not prescriptive enough. And people had no guidance on what we were expecting. And so what we've done is tried to provide much more guidance on what we're expecting. And I think that outweighs the few cases where we might have to go for some kind of Board of Appeals special permit exception, because the project as envisioned is actually the right thing, but it violates one of our guidelines.
Correct, and, you know, that's kind of the conversation we had.
I would say, I would propose that we keep it the way that it is, because I think the prescription is better than being willy-nilly about setting expectation. And I think it helps developers to have clear expectations of what we're looking for. Yeah, that's my opinion.
That's a good point.
But at other times, we make clear what our expectations are, and then they refer to the bylaw, how that's not...
Right, but what we've done now is we've tried to match our expectations with the bylaw.
Right.
And in the past, that hasn't been the case. What the bylaw says is expected, and what the planning board wanted didn't necessarily line up. And I think less subjectivity is always better when it comes down to opinions.
I completely agree on that. So it stays?
I'm good with keeping it.
All right.
I agree.
13's just adding the proper word. 14, I understand his point. The Village Center District has specific sign requirements that are located wholly within that. I'm going to say that this is a comment the board, I'm going to recommend this is a comment the board may wish to ignore for now. And at the time that the signed bylaw is addressed would be a more appropriate time to start folding that in. The signed bylaw being, and I'll use a planning term here, a hot mess. I think folding in the Village Center District signage would just kind of make that mess hotter. And I think that there's a way to take those standards and fold them in at a, at a time that that's really being more comprehensively addressed.
I agree.
I agree.
Number 15 goes to what I mentioned earlier. So I'm going to pull a fast one on you, and I'm going to jump ahead to Article 5, which is the zoning map change, which right now is just the elimination of the retail commercial district and turning it to commercial, as we had spoken about previously. I would add the relabeling of aquifer boundary with water supply protection district, because they do line up with each other. And I would also add the removal of the Route 2A overlay district, since the board has chosen to strike that district. So again, not really changing the intent of the article, more continuing to make sure that the map lines up with the bylaws in a substantial way. And again, that's really the whole gist of any of that change.
Yep, I agree with that.
Now, we get into, now, we're under Article 2, unless anybody in the audience or on the board has anything further for Article 1.
Are we skipping 16 through 19?
No, we're on 15, number 15. Well, actually, we just did number 15. We're on number 16.
Yeah, 16, and 16 is Article 2. So Article 2 includes the Water Supply Protection District, which, in being cross-eyed in the 12 times I've read this, requires a special permit for farming
Right, because it's in the water...
in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District.
Right.
So this is something I'm going to clarify with council.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I, I've never seen a special permit for farming be held up, but where it's a special district that's associated with water supply protection, I, I don't know if there's a special provision that I'm unaware of that would allow that to be held up. But I would be surprised. I think in the Zone 1, that might hold up. But in any other zone, I would be very surprised. Why am I not finding what I'm looking for? B, C.
It's the second page, if you flip the page over.
Second page E, right?
Yep, second page E. It's actually, got a little bar next to it.
And that is in the Zone 1.
Where does it say anything about special permit?
Uses, number 2 is uses permissible in the restricted area Zone 1 by special permit granted by the planning board. Irrespective of the uses permitted in the underlying district, the following are permitted. And, you know, we had a discussion about this, and in the past, I guess I'll say 10 or more years, the Attorney General has been very specific about reading all the bylaws that come through their office for approval, because as part of zoning change approval, the Attorney General must issue a letter. And in speaking with Gary, who's been doing this quite a bit longer than I have, I guess in the mid 80s to late 90s, the Attorney General was just like, oh, okay, you did the whole process right. We don't care what it says. On you go. So it's possible that this went through the Attorney General, and they never read the bylaw, this that you did the process right, move ahead. I'm a little bit surprised that this issue didn't come up in the recodification that was done over the past four or five years, because Ecode, who is the vendor that the town used for that project, did a significant and substantial legal and other review of the bylaws to ensure that they were compliant, and there were a number of statutes that they required or suggested be up... of statutes that they required or suggested be updated to more contemporary standards or things that they felt didn't meet current citation. But I'm going to ask the board to hold off on this till next week just to confer with town council that, you know, either it's legal.
I think it's legal.
The board may wish to keep it, or that it's not legal, and and we may wish to to look at some other way of managing that. Well.
I I'm pretty sure we're we're okay, but obviously, we should double check with
Yeah, I I think.
Because all we're looking to do is protect the groundwater contamination, which to me provides, and we're not looking to forbid anything that Chapter Forty Eight allows. We simply want to ensure that that the leachable materials are stored in the structure and used in a manner that is not going to contaminate our water supply. And I think that's a perfectly legitimate.
See, this is not talking necessarily about the entity of farm. This is talking about the activity of farming.
Correct.
The entity of a farm is given an exemption by Forty Eight Section Three from pretty much zoning. This is in the zoning bylaw. So this is not going to apply to any farm over five, six, what, five acres in the town of Lunenburg.
Again, I I'm.
It's the activity.
Bringing it to your attention and reiterating the conversations of Zone Enforcement Officer, Building Commissioner, and I had, and reiterating that I'd just prefer.
So you're going to check with legal and come back to.
I'm going to have council review it and and, you know, give it back.
I think this is reasonable because the the wellhead protection area is, I mean, and that's what Zone One is.
I'm I'm not in disagreement, but I I want us to. We all know that anybody can speak at town meeting, and I would prefer that we are solid in getting this done because
I would as well.
there's been a significant amount of work that's gone into this. The remaining three, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, refer to Article Three.
We're moving.
And they're all about pot. Medical marijuana specifically.
Oh, the waivers?
Correct. So the first one, uh, he talks about, you know, granting waivers to dimensional standards. He's concerned that they may violate Forty Eight. Uh, I don't know that that's something that I'm concerned about. This is a bylaw that's new enough that I'm pardon me, confident that the Attorney General actually read this one. And if there was something that they felt was a violation, would have certainly stricken, struck, stricken, whatever the proper word is.
I am stricken. You are struck.
I'm just going to start making words. They would have taken the language out that was inappropriate. So, you know, this is four fourteen F four.
Yeah.
Where it says waivers, the planning board may waive any conditional standard. Again, this is one of those things where
Four fourteen F four.
He's
Waivers.
Suggesting that it go into a rule and regulation type document. The majority of these types of permits are going to be special permits. The conditional standards are going to be part of the special permit review, which is a public hearing process. The power being granted upon the board through the bylaw itself, I believe, makes it legal within Forty Eight because the power is designated, these standards are developed, power is given to the planning board as special permit granting authority, waiver authority is given through that same process through the special permit grant.
Right.
All all done under the the statutory guidance of Forty Eight. Again, I can verify that with legal. But I I, you know, I think that I think this one's on pretty solid ground.
Yeah.
Yes, so basically, this is saying if they've got four hundred and seventy-five feet of setback, and they want to put it in, we'd have the right to allow them.
Correct. If the board felt it was appropriate and they had done all of their
Correct.
correct diligence and.
And it's just for marijuana, correct?
We may have a challenge. Maybe his concern is we can't supersede what the state regulations are. Meaning if the state says it's going to be within, has to be further than 500 feet from a school, we can't say, oh, 200 is okay.
That's correct. I don't think that that's what he's saying.
Maybe what we should say here is that any of the conditional, any of the
It says within the section.
Well, this section also covers mass department of public health restrictions. That's why he's saying any section. So I I would say that maybe we just were, it says the planning board may waive any of the conditional standards beyond what the state lays out or beyond the mass department of public health standards.
With the exception of those outlined in one oh five CMR seven twenty-five.
So which says, we can, we can waive our own, but we obviously can't waive the states.
Yeah, but isn't that what ZBA is for?
Well, that's what I was kind of saying, just to play devil's advocate. Why do we feel it's okay in this section and not in any other one?
Like the 15% open space.
Well, any, any kind of separate.
To waive our own, you mean? Is it supposed to?
Just about every other one. We, I mean, even with Highfield Village, we kicked it to the ZBA for dimensional areas.
But I mean, but.
But just why in marijuana section?
Again, we're saying, we're saying here that the ZBA has the right to waive something the state has imposed.
No, we're saying the planning board does.
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Have no issue with kicking it to the ZBA to keep it consistent with everything else. I'm just saying, why in this one instance?
There should be, the zoning board of appeals may waive any of.
In that instance, then you just strike it, strike all of Section Four.
Because they they address dimensional variations.
And they can do a special permit dimensional.
Okay, you're right.
It's up, I mean, if you guys want to strike that.
That's a strike it.
Is this the only place where we say that?
Uh, in this, yes. Is that full agreement?
Yeah.
Michael Ray?
I I have a question. Of course.
Or a statement.
Are are we giving the zoning board authority essentially, or are we, are we lose, are we losing any authority, or is this just clarifying with?
Well, our authority is in the.
Site plan approval.
Yeah. What you're losing is authority over waivers of one, two, three in this section, which is granted by Section Four. You don't really have waiver over one, so it would be two and three.
We like to argue about buffers.
I think what, I think there's a I I think that there's a a an argument to be made that this section would the removal of it would require that there's no ability to alter any of the design standards either in four, six, E, design standards shall be applicable to RMD. I have to look at that site because I don't, it's not right as it is now. So this would eliminate the ability to waive design standards by removing this. Because it's not just the buffer section, it's also the, it's not the 500-foot depth. So I.
Does this put us at risk of people going to the ZBA for approval for things instead of?
Correct. Oh, not for the actual use of any RMD, but if they go to the zoning board, the zoning board could say, oh, we think 375 feet is fine in this instance. And they come to you, and they have that, you could say, well, we don't agree, and we're not going to issue you the special permit because we feel that it doesn't meet this. Then you get into the legal test of
Why don't we, how about we?
That stand up or not?
How about we just say the planning board may waive any of the non-dimensional conditions
Design standards.
Within this section. And then all the design stuff is still with us, and the dimensional stuff gets kicked to ZBA.
I like that better because it's more consistent with how we've been doing things for the forever, as far as I can tell.
You're going to ask the question, right?
Yeah.
Thank goodness.
No one ever gives you a hard time for asking questions except after nine o'clock.
They still have the executive session.
Yeah.
It's the answering of them that takes the long time.
Next one?
Next one is the planning board may be advocating its authority to the police chief and the fire chief under Section four fourteen G one. Because it says all security measures shall be approved by the Lunenburg Fire and Police Chiefs. And he act, so essentially, if they approve it, planning board can't say, no, we think that we don't like that. We want something else.
Shall be reviewed by?
I I wouldn't actually agree with that. I would say that we would certainly be able to talk with them about it, but I think in the end, I would read this to be that this, that the chief of police and fire chief have to be in agreement with us. But I don't, I wouldn't read this to be that they can just.
It doesn't say that. It it just says that all the security measures have to be approved by the fire and police chief. Doesn't say that they have, that that they have the sole authority.
Yeah.
It just says that they have to be approved. Meaning, don't even bother talking to us until you have a plan that's already approved by the fire department and police chief.
And if we want to make adjustments to it, or we recommend changes, and they make them, then they can always go back.
I think, I think then to satisfy the concern, maybe we
Reviewed instead of approved?
I was going to say, we turn the comma.
Throw in at a minimum? Shall at a minimum be approved? Trying to fix the problem.
The final period turns into a comma and says for final approval. So it would read, all security measures shall be approved by the Lunenburg Fire and Police Chiefs, and active security systems shall be required for all RMD locations and approved by both Lunenburg Fire and Police Chiefs and submitted to the planning board for final approval.
Yeah.
Yep.
With, final approval with the special permit or something like that. So ultimately, it's saying that the planning board has the final approval on.
So then why don't you also, why, can you also just change approved by Lunenburg and ju- just say, uh, reviewed?
Yeah.
I would say that significantly weakens.
Does it?
Yeah.
I was just going to say, I think that having it approved by them means they're not just submitting comments, and you folks have, can take it under advisement.
Yeah.
Or and say, or say, huh, forget you guys. We think that that 90-year-old guy with a, with a, you know, rubber band gun is good enough. You don't need an armed guard or a locked door.
I doubt that'll come back as a recommendation.
Five-gallon pallet of rocks.
But what I'm saying is if they say, you know, you need two, two guards on every shift, and the doors need to be locked, and you guys are like, nah.
All right, we'll keep it.
For final approval, that's.
Yeah. And then the final one. G two.
G one, G two?
You know, I I guess I understand what he's saying. He's saying they, they can get in there if they want.
Maybe we should just strike it completely. Because is it really our, is it really a?
Let me just check with council on that.
Condition?
I I think it's really just.
Not a security condition of planning, is it?
I think it's a security condition of the permit, and I think the idea is just reinforcing the idea that these folks should be able to come in at any time with proper notice.
Should this say during construction?
But I don't think it's, I think it's for operation. I think it's an operational thing as opposed to a, a construction thing.
I think that what what Graves Engineering is saying, Mr. Walsh is saying, is that
No, this is actually the building commissioner.
That they can get in there anyway, so why do we have it specified that they have to give 24 hours' notice?
I think if you.
Because they might actually need 24 hours' notice.
Well, they generally do.
Yeah.
My understanding is that they could enter with with less than 24 hours' notice. But that's more.
If they're given permission.
Okay.
I would just strike it. I don't think it's, I don't think it belongs in our.
I think it should be a standard condition on.
Yeah, isn't that like pretty standard across the board?
So you want to just strike it, or do you want me to confer with council?
Confer. Yeah, I would confer.
It never hurts to ask the question.
Yeah.
You guys want to strike it, we can strike it next week.
It's not sure what he's saying.
Well, I'm already going to be talking to him anyway. I'm not going to talk to him for three hours.
I think every question's a thousand dollars.
Not yet. We're still on our fixed rate.
Very my divorce, anyway.
Well, it depends on your definition of question.
So Article Four is just the cleanup of Section eighty point three on the special permits and making our timelines match with those of the statute, and Article Five, we've already discussed.
Yep, we're all good.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Does the public have any more input regarding any of these?
Very good, sir.
Do we need to continue this?
Yes, you do. It is a public hearing, and I would ask that it be continued until April ninth.
Do we continue the public hearing to April ninth?
Correct.
Discussion, all in favor?
Get a second?
Yeah, Matthew seconded it.
Can't catch a break on the second today.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Minutes approval. Minutes of three nineteen eighteen. Any comments? Hearing none. The minutes from three nineteen eighteen, the executive session. Did everybody get a chance to look at those?
No, they're still going around. I was just finishing reading them.
Okay, these the executive session. Okay, the no, I just, okay. From three nineteen eighteen, the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments regarding that? No? What time do we have to ask for a continuing?
I think it's, it's 10:25 to continue past 10:30. But you may want to do it. I would actually recommend at this point that unless they were pressing items on the remainder of the agenda that the board moved to
Executive session?
Go to the executive session only to return, uh, to close the meeting.
Sure.
You know, I think the one thing I would say at this point is on April fifth at 7:00 PM in this lovely and historic room, the Charter Review Committee will be presenting their proposal and findings at a public hearing. Prior to the presentation at town meeting. And I would encourage anybody who's interested in government or whatnot to attend and make themselves heard.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, just, we got to make a, well, I guess we don't need a motion. No edits on the executive session minutes. I would like to open it up to public comment before we go into executive session, if there's anything left to be said.
Hi, Dave Pass, against 56 Whiting Street. Just wanted to congratulate you guys. You've done an incredible number of hours to get through all of this. And I can remember, you know, it's been a while since I've attended one of your meetings, but you've been talking about this forever. And to get it to this point and be able to get it to a town meeting is fantastic. Great job. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, good seeing you, man.
For Dave since it's a roll call vote.
So do we need a motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, we need a roll call vote, so we'll just wait for Dave.
Waiting for you. Need to shut.
So I read this as.
Do we need to shut the door? Do we need to stop recording?
We need to make a, we need to read the executive session, make a motion, and then we can adjourn to a different table.
Got you.
Say, so I would, I got to read all this. Entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter Thirty Eight, Section Twenty One, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, namely Town of Lunenburg versus Settler Solar at All, Worcester Superior Court, Docket Number One Seven Eight Five C V zero one nine five nine dash D, and Settler Solar LLC at All versus Town of Lunenburg at All. Land Court, Docket Number Seventeen M I S C zero 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 six nine zero H P S, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town.
So moved.
A roll call vote, all in favor. Mr. Jeffries? Mr. Proctor?
Aye.
Mr. Chenis?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And an aye for Mr. Bitner.
Aye.
Should we move to the?
Yes.
Yes.
And we need to stop recording if our call.
Yeah. Recording has to stop. We need to close the door.